Because our space is very tiny. Um, I invite we will still have elements of remote work even once we return to our offices that staff members may need to be on some sort of uh remote working from home kind of cycle. And obviously counselors can set up uh their office how they as long as it fits within the guidelines of, you know, whatever limit we are putting on in terms of physical uh people in a certain space. As long as it fits with, you know, wear your mask and everything else. That's fine, but I it will definitely still have to have some elements of working from home. There's no way we're just gonna show back up in the in in the the building. Uh because our office space is too tight. Um and we have to be mindful of the chamber. There'll still be a period of time where we will do work. Um and engage the public as best we can through technology, being uh present in the chamber. We have to just be mindful that all the reasons for the shutdown still exist. There's no cure, no vaccine. Anyway, I'm back to this call. Arroyo Baker.
So uh Arroyo says he's dealing with a family matter and maybe a few minutes late. I haven't heard from the other three yet.
I appreciate that. And when you say three, I have four. I have Baker, Braden, Campbell, and Edwards.
Braden's on, Braden's on.
Braden's on, excellent. Campbell, Edwards, Baker, and Arroyo will be late. Excellent. And where are we?
Can I just get a uh a sound check? I I didn't bring my earbuds. Uh I'm in the hall and I know the HVAC system can be loud. Is the is the sound okay?
Yes. You see, oh, you're in the building too. Everyone's in the building.
I feel down like now, like I shouldn't go into the building.
And hey, Michael, hey, Julia afterwards. We'll have to go. Oh, we can't. I was gonna say we was gonna go across the street.
Good try.
We'd have to get take, we have to get takeout. We can't go sit down and have a.
Hanover, Hanover's, isn't it opening today? Isn't that, or is it tomorrow?
It opened yesterday.
Yeah, it did get open unofficially yesterday, yeah.
Go around for outdoor if you got the energy afterwards, if you wanna kinda shoot over.
All right, I Lydia's in, so.
Edwards then, so Campbell and Baker and.
Yeah.
And what's the time check?
We still have three minutes.
Carrie, how are we doing on your end?
I'm just waiting for confirmation and we'll be um up and running.
All right, can you let us know when you have that confirmation? We're gonna give our. One more time to Joan.
Absolutely.
Testing one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four.
Is that Baker? Who's that?
Five, six, seven. That was Flynn.
Yeah.
Cal, um President Janey, I do have uh Father Michael for today.
Oh, that's excellent. I thought the clerk was doing wonderful. Who is inviting Father Michael?
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, if you were so excited today, we have Father Michael. I'm gonna just um.
Can't see you.
You can't see me?
Yeah, but it's probably my issue.
No.
I can hear you.
No, Lydia, your video's off.
Oh.
Yeah, it's off for a little bit. I'm trying to save battery and and my phone. I've learned to balance.
So um I'll call upon you for for Pastor Mike.
Okay.
I'll call upon you so you can intro him. Um wonderful, excellent. Do we have Campbell with us? Or Baker?
Uh yeah, Baker's on.
Excellent. Good, right? So we'll give Campbell a couple more minutes, because Arroyo will be a few minutes late, and we'll go from there. I'm gonna re-up on water while we wait for them.
How are you, Madam Clerk?
I'm wonderful. How are you, Counselor?
Doing well, thank you.
That's good. And Catherine's doing well, I hope.
Doing great, yeah.
Good.
Out feeling a lot of moving now, which is really exciting.
Oh, isn't that exciting? Oh, my gosh. Yeah. It seems like forever, and then all of a sudden.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Final, kind of, well, not quite the final stretch, but the beginning of the final stretch.
That's right, that's right. Yeah. It's just such an exciting time, though. Very special.
Hmm. How are your wonderful grandkids?
Oh, I I I've barely seen them because we're still quarantining. Um but I'm hoping uh later today, around five, I might go over and be in the ad with them for a few minutes. Okay, yeah. I just can't wait to hug them. I I oh, and and if Delaney sees me, she'll say, no, no, back up two steps.
I love it.
Yeah, she's, oh, my gosh, but they want, everyone's good. That's yeah. So I love hearing that we'd be coming back. My office has been open the entire time.
Yeah.
But we moved um uh for the public, we're actually down on the second floor. So the rest of the office is upstairs, and so everyone's in two days a week. And it's it's proving to be very, very challenging. You know, you start something and, you know, and you're not there the next day, so it's just, but we're hanging in there.
Yeah, good. Well, thank you and to your team. They've done exceptionally during these very, very trying times.
Wow, you're so kind, as always. Thank you.
Madam President, we're um, I think we have everyone we've been waiting for, and we are rolling live on the web, so whenever you're ready to start, we can go.
Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Um and Arroyo will still join us late. I think we're good since we're going live and.
I think he's, I think he's in.
Yeah, he's in.
Everyone's in, excellent. And it's after 12 officially, yes? 12 o'clock? We can go?
Yes, yes, good to go.
All right, if you guys are ready, we're gonna get going. You guys ready?
We're on.
Here we go. Madam Clerk, could you please uh call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Arroyo.
Present.
Counselor Baker.
Yeah.
Counselor Bach.
Here.
Counselor Braden.
Here.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Edwards.
Here.
Counselor Asabi George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor Mejia.
Present, and I also wanna let you know that Andrea texted and said that she's on. I don't know if you could hear her or see her, though.
Yeah, we could.
I'm on, thank you.
Hello, thank you, thank you, Counselor. Um Counselor Mejia, present. Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
And Counselor Wu.
Present.
Wonderful. Madam President, we have all in attendance.
Wonderful, thank you so much. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present, and we will begin our meeting with the invocation. I'm gonna call upon Counselor Edwards, who will introduce our clergy for today. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. It is my honor to introduce you, Father Michael Della Penna. He is born in Boston's North End. He completed a bachelor's degree in psychology and philos- philosophy, and then a master of divinity degree from Western Jesuit School of Theology before being ordained as a priest in 1999. He is a, as a Franciscan friar of the Immaculate Conception Province. He studied the Pontifical Institute of Medieval Studies in Toronto and later completed um a doctorate degrees in the French式spirituality and in Rome. He served as an associate pastor, retreat director, formation director, and definitor of his province, for his province. He was recently transferred from being the director of Valley of the Angels Orphanage in Guatemala, and now is the pastor of Saint Leonard of Port Maurice Parish in the North End. He also leads, he regularly leads pilgrimages to Assisi for Franciscan pilgrimage programs. And uh he has authored various articles for several publications, as well as published The Crucified Night in 2015. He's taught in Saint Bonaventuri University and lectured and given retreats in Africa, Canada, Guatemala, the U.S., and Italy. Father Michael finds joy in leading others to come to a greater knowledge and deeper love of Christ. It is my, through retreats and pilgrimage, it is my pleasure to introduce Father Michael.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to be with you here this morning, and thank you for giving me the chance to invoke um a blessing on all of you. Let us begin in the name of God, the Father, and of the Son, and of the Most Holy Spirit. Amen. Good and loving God, thank you for the gift of this day. Today, we ask in a special way that you give us the grace of health, peace, and wisdom. We ask you, Lord, for health for those who are suffering from this virus, that they might be protected, that they might heal. We ask for peace during this time of civil unrest, that they might feel your presence, your love within their hearts. We pray that we might be able to grow in being able to see one another as brother and sister. And today, we pray in a special way for the gift of wisdom. As you begin your deliberations this morning, that the Lord might inspire you, who have given your lives to help the city and guide it, we pray that the Lord might give you light and wisdom. So may Almighty God bless each of you today, in the name of God, the Father, and of the Son, and of the Most Holy Spirit. Amen. And have a blessed day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you so much, Father Mike. We're gonna pledge allegiance to the flag now, if you wanna join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
States of America. And to like for which.
One nation, under God. Divisible, with liberty. Justice.
Thank you so much. We will move on. In our agenda, the first item is the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand as approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the meetings are approved. Now we will move on uh to communications from His Honor, the Mayor. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0752, please?
Thank you, Madam President. Message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and extend an amount of $1,297,758 in the form of a grant for the FY20 coronavirus emergency supplemental funding. Awarded by the United States Department of Justice to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund equipment, supplies, and training to safety, to safely carry out community policing efforts during COVID-19 pandemic.
Hello. Thank you so much. Docket 0752 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Uh the next quarter, the part of the agenda is the reports of public officers. Um I don't have my agenda, and so I'm getting my agenda printed out, so that was my little delay there. Um I wanna make sure I'm keeping up with the agenda. Um we're gonna, we're gonna do docket 0753 through 0757 together, Madam Clerk.
Terrific. Thank you so much, Madam President. Docket 0753 notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of May 13, 2020. Docket 0754 notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Kathleen Joyce as the Chair of the Boston Licensing Board for a term expiring, excuse me, June 1st, 2026. Document number 0755, communication from Counselor Baker regarding docket number 0749 offered on, at the June 3rd, 2020 City Council meeting. A resolution in support of federal action condemning police brutality, racial profiling, and the use of excessive militarized force. Would like to go on record as in support of the resolution. Docket number 0756, communication was received from Timothy J. Smith, Esquire, executive officer regarding the appointment of election officer and election schedule. Docket 0757, communication was received from the City Clerk of the amendment to the contract between Landmark Center Owner Limited Partnership and the City of Boston pursuant to Section 6A of Chapter 121A of the Massachusetts General Laws. Your sound.
There we go. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0753 through 0757 will be placed on file, and we'll move on to matters recently heard for possible action, starting with docket 0673.
Thank you. Docket 0673, audit for hearing to explore preparation for youth employment opportunities and post-COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you. Uh the chair recognizes Counselor Braden, who is Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Counselor Braden? And I want to remind you, you're on mute.
Madam, Madam uh Clerk, I'd like to call on the uh the lead sponsors to make their comments before I um. Oh, hang on, the the Strong Committee on, the the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities held a hearing on docket number 0673 to discuss preparation for youth employment opportunities amid the post-COVID-19 pandemic. We had eight panelists, including youth advocates and representatives from the administration, plus public testimony. Uh Madam Clerk, I'd like to allow the sponsors to, a moment to speak on this issue, the lead sponsors.
Madam President, you you talking to me? I I'm happy to allow myself and my colleagues just a brief moment if they'd like to report, and I assume um uh Chairwoman uh Braden, would you like to keep this in committee? Is that your?
Yes, that's my intention. I I it it was, I felt that it was a good start to the conversation, and we look forward to additional questions being answered by the administration regarding expanding the success link program, age range demographics covered uh to be ex- and expanded to include undocumented youth, additional funding for the number of jobs available, but uh since you and uh Counselor Campbell and Counselor Mejia were lead sponsors, I I really would like to give you a moment to make some comments.
I appreciate you. I do indeed, and I will turn to the lead sponsor first. Counsel, uh Counselor Campbell, would you like to make a brief statement or remarks about the hearing?
Yes, I'll be very brief. I know it's a long meeting, Madam President. Um so first of all, thank you and Counselor Mejia for your partnership on this important issue. Um of course, thank you to my colleagues for participating, and Counselor Braden, thank you for running an incredible hearing. Um and congratulations again on your first. Um you know, it was uh really informative. I appreciated the young people in particular who showed up, who spoke, not only to say jobs are important. They provide resources, they give us opportunities, mentorships, you know, with our employers, et cetera, all the things that we as ladies had through pick or ABCD. But they also had specifics, right? How we can expand and put more money into the youth jobs budget. I know the mayor has recently expanded uh the youth jobs um allotment, which is great. I think we can do a little bit more so that our 14-year-olds have jobs, so that some folks who are either, I hate to say gang involved, that was some of the language Rufus was using, but those folks who we don't often include in our jobs uh outreach can also have more opportunities. So I think there's a little bit more we can do there. But I appreciated, you know, ways in which we could reallocate some resources for maybe other, other parts of the budget for these job opportunities over the summer and in the fall. And lastly, I'll just say, and I said this at the hearing, I refuse to believe that we don't have enough resources in this city, given the private sector, the nonprofit sector, higher ed, um all of the resources that come through Boston and Greater Boston. I think as a collective, we should be able to make sure that every young person who wants an opportunity and a job has one. Um and so I'm looking forward to thinking outside the box on some of those partnerships. And um and also looking at the survey that the city did to um help see how we can work together to make this happen for our young people, even if it's virtually and remotely. So thank you, and thank you, Counselor Mejia, thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Braden.
Thank you so much. Uh Counselor Mejia, would you like to add a few remarks on?
Yeah, so uh thank you, Chair. Uh thank you, President Counsel, Janey. I'm gonna be brief for the rest of my life. Um I just wanted to thank uh Counselor Braden for uh hosting your first hearing. Um it was incredible. Thank you again. Um and my uh my sisters in service in regards to pushing for youth jobs. One of the things that I just wanted to uplift is that, for me, a job literally saved my life. Um having worked two to three jobs throughout high school and college, I know that it really sort of solidified for me a strong work ethic. Um and so really looking forward to working alongside you all and the city to ensure that young people have as many opportunities for employment. I would just like to uplift that, for me, I'm really pushing for year-round employment. Summer youth employment is important, but if we're not creating opportunities for young people to gain um career explorations and and gain opportunities to um be employed throughout the year, then we're missing the mark. And so really looking forward to uh looking at how we can support um year-round employment that does not consist with having young people competing for the same jobs that their parents are doing. So really looking at um how we build those strategic partnerships to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I would just echo uh the comments on an excellent hearing. I know this was your first one, Counselor Braden. You did an amazing job. It's a really important topic. Uh we do need to be thinking about youth employment as part of our economic justice agenda, and it should go beyond summer employment, um and this is important in terms of setting people up for the future. Uh docket 0673 will remain in the Committee of Strong Women, Families, and Communities, and will now move on to docket 0683.
Docket 0683, ordinance banning facial recognition technology in Boston.
Thank you. The the chair recognizes Counselor Edwards, who is Chair of Government Ops. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Yesterday, we had the hearing. I thought it was a very robust, great conversation about the technology, about how we survey people in the City of Boston, and about overwhelmingly, I would say, the amount of people, uh the Police Commissioner included, has said that the technology is not there right now, and it doesn't, and it, and it also disproportionately impacts darker-skinned uh people or women, especially. It misgenders people. It is just faulty at this particular moment. And so of all of the uh back and forth and many, many of the comments that come, that came in, there has been an outright, just overwhelming support to ban facial recognition technology in the City of Boston. I will reiterate, the Commissioner already said that he does not support it, and that they are not practicing right now. At issue and why we felt the need to have this hearing so early is because the upgraded contract that the city has with, I forgot the name of the company, um is going to allow for facial recognition in that particular upgraded contract. And so uh the colleagues and lead sponsors wanted to introduce that, this legislation to basically prohibit any upgrades, not just now, but in the future, to facial recognition technology. I want to thank my colleagues for showing up. Mad, uh Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Wu and Arroyo, of course, are the lead sponsors, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Bach, and Counselor Braden. I want to thank you all for showing up. Um and again, even from my colleagues' comments, they all seem to further support that this technology was not there. Uh and the the company's name, thank you, Counselor Bach, it's Brief Camp. Um so uh I also want to thank all the advocates that showed up. Uh I think we had well over 100 people signed up to speak, and the hearing was over three hours, and I want to thank Counselor Wu for chairing the final bar, part of it that I couldn't. Um it was, again, we had technology, we had civil rights, we had all perspectives of new laws, and all of them overwhelmingly opposed uh the uh ban, or excuse me, opposed facial recognition surveillance. Um so at this point, um I will turn it over to the lead sponsors. Uh one of the asks from the BPD was to have a working session to specifically work on uh the language in the ordinance for permitted uses. They had some suggestions. He did not have that language with him at the time. There was also three uh text amendments um to look at, one, uh BPD initiated uh investigations and and banning those also uh under the permitted uses. Two, uh having a fee shifting or attorney's fees to allow for folks to enforce this without having to get expensive attorneys or having coming up, having to come out of pocket. And then three, looking at supply chain and private actors and how the City of Boston could uh impact how private actors are using, our money is being funneled to private actors that may be using facial recognition technology. Um it's used in so many different things, uh including housing in some cases. Some people want to scan your face of whether you can get into a building or not. And so it's very important for us to know how expansive this technology could be in all of our lives. Um I I I have agreed to a working session. Um it will be very soon, and we will be pushing to have a vote for this uh before the end of the month. So I wanted to make sure my colleagues knew and saw this language and made sure that they were looking at their, this particular language and coming with their suggestions as soon as possible. Uh if, with your permission, Madam President, I would like to turn over to the lead sponsors.
Thank you for that thorough report. Uh at this time, I will uh call upon the lead sponsors for brief remarks. Uh the chair recognizes Counselor Wu. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Madam Chair, as well. It was, as as you heard, a really wonderful hearing that brought out a wide coalition of advocates, residents, experts. Um an incredible number of professors were were present as well, so we we heard from a lot of expertise about exactly why this technology is not appropriate, both, as you heard, because it is racially discriminatory, but also because it presents a threat to our basic rights. Um I want to especially thank Commissioner Gross for taking the time to be here, be there with us yesterday. Uh we all know how busy he is, and especially now, and he even went beyond his uh originally scheduled time and gave us a little bit more back-and-forth time for questions. As the chair mentioned, there are some important um pieces of information that we learned. One is that there is still urgency. BPD uh stated that they likely will need to do that software upgrade, and so they will try not to, you know, use the technology, but it will, it will be available um with the next upgrade, and they may need to do that soon, as as the Commissioner indicated. We also learned that state police uh very likely uses this technology already, and that BPD may, you know, again, we'll get more details, but it sounded like BPD may work with either the RMV or the state police directly to access some versions of face recognition and and matching, uh which, again, presents some issues. So um I wanna thanks everyone, especially those who were present yesterday, my co-sponsor. Um Madam President has also been part of these conversations along the way, and the many, many advocates who have gotten us to this point. Looking forward to um continuing the conversation and seeing Boston stand up and lead. Thank you.
Uh thank you so much. I will recognize the co-sponsor, Counselor Arroyo. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, uh and thank you, Counselor Edwards, for chairing a great hearing. I just want to thank uh my colleagues who were in attendance uh for for being there uh until the end, for the most of you. Uh I I just want to thank our folks who did testimony. I think pretty much all of my substantial issues were covered by uh both Counselor Edwards and Counselor Wu. Um and I'll just say that uh it seemed like it, from where I was standing, that the support overwhelmingly was to ban facial recognition, both from uh folks giving testimony, but also uh Commissioner Gross sounded to be in support uh pretty firmly. And so I appreciate him and thank him for for having that sense. So thank you all.
Uh thank you so much. Um yes, this is a very important hearing. I appreciate the thorough report and also the timeline. Chair Edwards, I think it is important to, particularly when there's so much agreement, um that we go ahead and move forward, that we iron out whatever little items may remain in a working session, and that we bring this to a vote. Um you know, I certainly wanted to be present in the hearing. I couldn't log on, but I was watching live in real time uh that hearing, as well as um the listening session on the budget, and it's clear that the support uh is there, so I'm glad that we will be moving uh quickly. So docket 0683 will remain in the Committee of Government Operations, and now we will move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Uh first up is docket 0758. Madam Clerk, would you do the honors?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0758, Counselor Asabi George, offer the following order for hearing regard regarding dyslexia services in the Boston Public Schools.
Thank you. Uh the chair recognizes Counselor Asabi George. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I do ask if we could add Counselor Flynn as an original co-sponsor. It was an oversight on the initial filing.
Uh seeing and hearing no objections, Counselor Flynn is added.
Thank you. Uh thank you, Madam President. Uh while we um continue this work through certainly dealing with the number of crises here in our city, we are continuing our work to make sure that our students are able to access the services they need in school. In 2018, parents, students, teachers, and advocates won the passage of a state act relative to students with dyslexia. Unfortunately, they've seen little action since since then that would provide students with disabilities like dyslexia the support they need to learn, as well as the teachers uh they need who are properly trained. I'd like to thank the parents in particular who have worked hard uh with my office in partnership to make sure that that we got to a point where we were ready to file this hearing order. It is. It has been something that we've been working on over the last few years, and in particular, the last couple of months. I look forward to partnerships, Counsel Flynn, on this issue, and making sure that our students across the district have the appropriate services they need, especially our students with dyslexia. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I want to say thank you to Counsel Anissa Asabi George for including me as a sponsor, and I also want to say thank you to Counsel Asabi George for her important work on this issue for many years. I've heard stories from parents who have children with dyslexia, and how difficult it can be for them to get the appropriate services for their students. Early intervention is key in helping students, but right now, there are still no guidelines, as Counsel Asabi George mentioned, yet on screening procedures. And oftentimes, parents would have to pay out-of-pocket for testing, which can have a long waitlist and expensive. We also need to have learning methods, such as the Orton-Gillingham in BPS for students with dyslexia. It should be more widely available, with more training available for teachers. I'm looking forward to this hearing, so that we can see how we can better help our students with dyslexia. It's important that we provide enough resources for students with learning disabilities and challenges, so all of our children can thrive in our schools. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Madam Counsel President, Jane. And I also would like to thank the makers, Counsel Asabi George and Flynn, for filing this hearing order. As someone who worked with parents in the education space, issues of dyslexia is one that I heard often, particularly from parents of color who were struggling with identifying and getting the support services that they needed in the city of Boston. So when we're talking about issues of dyslexia, I think it's really, I'm really looking forward to ensuring that the voices of the parents who have often felt left out of this conversation are centered in leading this work. So Counsel Asabi George, when you get ready for the hearing order, I can stack that place up with parents of color who have struggled with this issue in ways that have led them to lead the fight. Fabian is one of those champions in this space, and so looking forward to helping you organize parents and bringing their voices to this hearing. So thank you so much for your leadership on this.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. The Chair recognizes Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you. I don't want to add much, except to say thank you so much to the sponsors for doing this, and just want to lift up the community advocates who have been relentless and so persistent in fighting for not just their own children, but the whole community. So especially want to thank Marcella Slayney. I know she has been tireless in this, and I really appreciated learning more from her on this issue over the years. Thank you so much. Oh, please, please add my name, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be very brief. Thank you to the makers, Counsel Asabi George and Counsel Flynn, for your leadership. I too just wanted to thank Fabian and all of the decoding dyslexia parents and advocates, those who've been working on these issues for so long. But I was just talking to her, so I just wanted to give a special shout-out for her passion for the work, her intentionality in terms of inclusivity, and speaking up for parents who often feel like they don't have a voice in the process. So thank you very much, and thank you again to the makers. Thank you, Madam President.
Hi, thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to thank the sponsors. Please add my name. I've done a lot of work with respect to out-of-district placement. I believe the school that is recognized as a leader is up in Beverly. Be great if we had a school like that here in Boston. And it dovetails nice with stuff that I've talked about over the years, which is making sure that all of our Boston Public School students get their eyes examined regularly throughout the course of their academic career. We do have situations, whether it's a situation of dyslexia or a situation where a kid just can't read the chalkboard, and it goes unnoticed and undetected for a long period of time, which then leads to other issues. And so I'm proud to support my colleagues' efforts here and look forward to a hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other speakers, I'm looking for folks who want to sign their name. I think Counsel Braden wants to add a couple of words. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden.
I think this issue is vitally important. Dyslexia can impact a child's ability to achieve their goals with regard to reading, and without good reading skills, then your, all of your academic learning is delayed. So as a person who's had a family member with dyslexia, who struggled with academics in school for many, many years, I really feel this is a vitally important subject, and please add my name.
Thank you so much. A show of physical hands for those who would like to add on their name. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counsel Bach. Counsel Braden, I believe you have. Counsel Mejia, Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Wu, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Campbell. Please also add the Chair. I think I got everyone, yes?
Sorry, Madam President.
Counselor Edwards, please add Counsel Edwards, and docket 0758 will be referred to the Committee on Education. We will now move on to docket 0759. Madam Clerk, could you do the honors?
Docket 0759, Counselors Wu and Mejia offer the following resolution, urging the MBTA to protect, excuse me, free movement and peaceful assembly with reliable public transit services during public demonstrations.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to make a motion to suspend, sorry, to suspend the rules and add Counsel Bach to this as an original co-sponsor.
Seeing and hearing, no objections. Counsel Bach is added. Wonderful.
Thank you. So we all know how fundamental public transportation is, and I'm a broken record on this, but just want to emphasize how important it is to democracy as well, and that we saw over the gatherings in downtown and throughout Boston, that there were several instances in which those who had come as peaceful protesters felt scared, trapped, and really had their plans turned upside down when the MBTA suddenly closed stations. It's one thing to have a plan and announce that this is the plan for large-scale events, and to put in place a set of protocols to ensure everyone's safety. It's another thing to be open, so that people can take the teeth on the way there, but then to close down, shut suddenly, shut down suddenly, and then people are trapped and have no way of getting back. So just want to get on record and thank my co-sponsors on this, to urge the MBTA to recognize their role in protecting peaceful assembly and the right of free movement. I do want to note that there's another, one of the clauses in this called on the T to stop transporting police as part of, and law enforcement in general, as part of the use of public transportation to these protests that were to protest police brutality. And in fact, the MBTA Board, the Fiscal Management Control Board, voted to do that same thing, and the MBTA officially confirmed that they would be putting that into practice. So in some ways, that has happened since we filed this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counsel Wu for your advocacy on all things transportation. During the peaceful demonstrations a few weeks ago, we heard that the MBTA shut the stations closest to those who were trying to leave and return home. I myself had to go twice to go pick up people who were stranded and had no way of getting home, and it was pretty intense and nerve-wracking for folks who didn't find a way out. People felt like they were trapped and had no way out. But let's be real, that's how people feel all the time when it comes to the inequities in our system. I'm happy to hear that the MBTA is banning transportation of the police and military officials on our transit network. We try to lead with an asset-based approach in our office, so I will say this, I know that the MBTA has the capacity to do more in order to protect our residents. This resolution is an important first step in ensuring that our people have access to safe, reliable transportation, so that we can peacefully conclude mass demonstrations. Let's find ways to work cooperatively, so that we can serve the members of the public, because that's what we're here to do. And I just have also been urging that we work across city and state, and that there's more coordination and communication and collaboration happening. I think that we have an opportunity to change the way we do business, and it can't just be getting information from a trickle-down approach. We need to do a better job at coordinating and communicating with folks. And I also will urge that we start thinking about how we can communicate in multiple languages. You know, I think one thing is to send out a tweet on social media, and perhaps maybe even something on Facebook, but you have to do so in ways that are culturally responsive, and you have to give people an opportunity to plan ahead, as Counsel Wu mentioned. So I'm here for all of it, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. The Chair recognizes Counsel Edwards.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the makers for their leadership in this, but also wanted to add that this is not just about the issue of police and also public transportation and making sure that it's still a safe place. It's also about making sure that when the police want to acquire any resource, that the public has the ability to have a say in that. And that's what I understood, that this is a free resource that they were taking to help them and assist in their policing of the population. I think it's very important, as they do with surveillance, and should be doing with surveillance, and as we've called for them to do, that they come back to the public and say, this is a resource that we would like to have. We pay for those buses, so before it is automatically commandeered by the police at any point in time, we should have a say in how that's done. So I want to thank the makers. I fully support the T's decision to separate the two functions. They are not an arm of the police, and I would like to keep it that way.
Thank you so much, Counsel Edwards, and my apologies to Counsel Bach, an original co-sponsor. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I want to thank my colleagues for letting me join as a co-sponsor on this, and just to say, I was on the Boston Common for many hours on Sunday night, the 31st, and what I saw was that, you know, it seems as though in reaction to an incident several blocks off the Common, that this decision to close those stations was precipitously made before the protests had concluded. And so what I watched was a river of young people, 15 minutes after the station had been closed, head across the Common to go home, and find that they couldn't. And, you know, between 9:00 and 10:30 that night, gave countless groups directions to North Station, even as that walk became a lot less safe. My constituents saw tons of folks trying to figure out how to get home, walking through Comat Mall. I mean, it's just like, you know, I think the T has responded to this by saying, well, we have closed stations before in the case of big events, but there's a real difference between closing a station for 20 minutes because you're experiencing crowding, and shutting off the whole network of downtown stations, when you've got a whole bunch of young people who are doing something that is not just not criminal, but to be encouraged, right? Which is exercising their First Amendment rights and standing up for what they believe in. And I heard the next day from parents of many of those young people, who were worried sick about how they were getting back home. And I just think that I was alarmed the following day to hear a comment from the T about the fact that, you know, the closures had enabled the commute on Monday morning to go off without a hitch, and it's just like, getting our young people, and frankly, to a huge extent, our young people of color, home in the evening is just as important as a seamless commute on a Monday morning, not least to mention a seamless commute when most people aren't commuting. And I just, I just really felt there's a huge error of judgment here, and one that was then compounded over the following days. I mean, I ultimately sent a formal letter to the GM of the T by the third, when repeatedly the T stations have been closed again, in the case of several, again, you know, peaceful protests. And I just, I just really want to emphasize that, you know, being able to make a safe plan, you know, and to count on our public transit infrastructure is a piece of being able to exercise those rights that you have as a citizen and as a resident in our city. And so I think this is, it's an issue of utmost importance, and it's an issue where we saw that in the heat of the moment, you know, someone's perception of what made sense from a sort of policing perspective just totally, I think, got it wrong. And we need protocols in place to make sure that that doesn't happen again, because what I saw was a situation where a lot of people became less safe, not more safe. And frankly, where I think we ended up with a ton of people stuck on the Common much later than they wanted to, in a way that also limited our ability to respond to other situations across the city. So, yeah, I just really want to emphasize the importance of this issue, and making sure that we, that we learn from a mistake. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Counsel Bach. Here recognizes Counsel Flynn for very brief remarks. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel President. Thank you, Counsel Wu and Mejia, for introducing this resolution. I agree that we need to protect the free movement, peaceful assembly, in that peaceful protesters should have a safe and affordable way to get back home, such as using public transportation. I know, as Counsel Wu mentioned, that the MBTA will no longer use its buses to transport police to protest. I also think it's important to have a safe and effective way to transport our police officers and first responders from one place to another. I think that's important. I think that's a discussion we need to have. We want to make sure our protesters are safe, and we want to make sure our police officers and first responders are safe. I had families of police officers who expressed to me the need for officers to have a way to get to and from large assemblies that require police presence. So I know that there are some who are concerned about this. I also think we need a separate conversation, as I mentioned, on the best way to transport police to events. I think this is an important resolution, and that we should do what we can to protect peaceful protests and allow them to access public transportation. I plan to support this, and I just wanted to raise those concerns. And I also think that we, the city of Boston, needs a seat at the table at the MBTA Board. If the city of Boston had a seat at the table, we could be involved in some of these discussions. And we don't have it right now. I know there's proposals up at the State House to address that, but it's critical that the city of Boston have a seat at the table. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counsel Wu and Counsel Mejia, and Counsel Bach.
Thank you so much, Counsel Flynn. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously concur with the previous speaker and also with Counsel Bach. I just have a question through the Chair to the makers, if they would consider eliminating the last "be it further resolved." I just want to draw folks' attention, particularly in mass casualty situations. You know, Boston was the launching pad for September 11th. We also had the Marathon bombing, and again, in situations where there's mass casualty or maybe an active shooter situation, we would really need our public safety personnel to make decisions. We don't have the opportunity to call for a community meeting or to check with the MBTA's Fiscal Management Control Board. Quite frankly, the Fiscal Management Control Board should have acted quicker and put someone from Boston on their board. You know, we've given them $85 million of an assessment, and we don't even have a seat at the table, which is disgusting. So the fact that they moved so quick in situations like this, arguably abandoning our police officers, is a whole other issue. But I'm okay with the resolution, with the exception of that last portion, just because of the mass casualties. If that would be removed, I'd be able to support it. And again, the first two resolves the perfect sense. I concur with her opinion, pardon me, Madam President, with respect to Counsel Bach, her comments were right on with respect to being able to get folks in and out of our city safely all day long. The two first resolves speak directly to that, and I'm okay with that. It takes it a step further, and I'm just concerned, again, in a mass casualty.
Counsel Wu, can you respond to Counsel Flaherty?
Yes, Madam President, and thank you so much to my colleague, and certainly, the co-sponsors should feel free to weigh in as well. I would just, I would note that in the drafting of it, the operative word of that last whereas clause, and I'll read it just in case others don't have it in front of them, it's the third "be it further resolved," that the council requests the MBTA's commitment not to delegate command of transit employees, vehicles, facilities, and other resources, or delegate decision-making about its service and operations to law enforcement. So in the drafting of it, the operative word was delegate, and I hear you, Counsel Flaherty, that, you know, certainly there are snap.
We read it, because your internet has been out.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Okay. Can you hear me now? Is it okay? Okay. "Be it further resolved that the council requests..." Um, be it further resolved that the council requests the MBTA's commitment not to delegate command of transit employees, vehicles, facilities and other resources or delegate decision-making about its operations to law enforcement. So, um, I was just noting that in the drafting of it, the operative word is delegate, that certainly there may be circumstances where, you know, it's a rushed decision or this or that. I think on this issue and this circumstance, when the subject of the protest was specifically around the treatment of particularly black residents by police, that was not the, and stations were shut down and so people didn't have a way to access services, but they saw the services were used otherwise in a different way, the T has voted to change that. Um, I would push, you know, as Council Edwards was saying, that the T should have policies in place that the board and the T has set, that we should not be in a place where the police are proactively commandeering and making decisions about buses. This is, you know, there's a knowable set of, um, extenuating circumstances that there should just be policies in place. And I think this is where the T is headed anyway, uh, but I would respectfully, um, decline the, the amendment just because I think we're not, we're not saying that the T should never be able to decide anything on their own control. We just want to say it needs to be an intentional decision and it needs to be not made by law enforcement, but by the people who are running this public resource of public transportation.
I appreciate that, obviously through the chair, I appreciate that, then obviously the.
No, we're not going to do that.
You're not doing what?
When I call upon you. So, what I hear Council Wu saying is she'd like it to stay. I'm going to come back to you, Council Flaherty, to see if that helped clarify or anything. I'm going to come back to you. What I hear you saying, Council Wu, is you and the other two co-sponsors, because of the word delegate and how you've crafted it, was carefully crafted, and you'd like the resolution. I just want to understand, you want the resolution to stay as presented?
That's correct, but I want to, if the co-sponsors have a different idea, um, I want to make sure they have a chance to speak up to.
Right before I call upon you, Council Flaherty, I'm going to just let the other two co-sponsors get in and then we'll hear back from you, Council Flaherty. So we will go, uh, directly then to Council Mahia, if you would like to weigh in. If not, I'll go to Council Bach. Council Mahia?
No, I just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, Council Flaherty for his recommendations. However, I'd like to, um, support my, uh, the lead sponsor in the way it was crafted and, um, agree and support her vision and, and, um, stand alongside her with the decision to keep as is.
Thank you, Council Mahia. And Council Bach specifically if, to address Council Flaherty's concern. So would you like to comment on that, Council Bach? The issue that Council Flaherty raised? Council Bach, are you with us? I see your video is off. He may not be with us. Um, okay, so I'm going to turn it back over, uh, to Council Flaherty and I see that, uh, Council Edwards wants to jump in. Council Flaherty, you are now, um, able to respond back in?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Because the delegate language is still in there, I'm just a little uncomfortable again, um, with everything except for that, just, I was on the council during September 11th. I was here, obviously during the Marathon bombing and, again, God forbid, we have a mass casualty situation, uh, or an active shooter situation that we've seen in, in other jurisdictions, uh, our police officers not, and our first responders, our fire department and our EMS, not having the ability to be able to sort of commandeer, uh, rapid transit, uh, to get people to hospital, to safe haven, out of a particular situation, out of a building. I think it's dangerous. Um, and other than that, if it would be removed, I'm on board with it. If it's staying in there, I just, in good conscience, I, I just can't do it, God forbid.
I'm going to call upon, uh, Council Edwards, give Council Bach a chance to, to rejoin us if she's come, oh, she is back in there. I'm going to go to Council Edwards, then I'm going to let Council Bach respond directly to Council Flaherty, and then we're going to go from there. Council Edward, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I wanted to note that, uh, the, the crux of, uh, Council Flaherty's argument is about the emergency moment. What I understand is that this ordinance, first of all, is a resolution, so we don't actually, we're not stopping anything. This is a matter of support, right? But also, this is, this is a question of policing and whether policing should be responding to all kinds of emergencies. I do not see this as a limit for public safety officers or public safety personnel to be responding to an emergency. We have, for example, the Office of Emergency Management. That is supposed to respond in terrorist attacks and massive fires and massive catastrophes. We have offices at the state and city level to respond to that. They are not police officers, however. And I think that that is what, uh, the question that all of us have before us is where and how do police officers, where are they supposed to be moving? Are they, should, should they be the first call in all situations? Should public safety personnel and first responders be there? Absolutely. But is it always a time for police enforcement? And what I understood is that this was a, an attempt not to respond to an emergency, but to move people to jail or to move police officers to a situation. And I think, again, this is not stopping the state or the city to respond to a safety or emergency situation. We have the Office of Emergency Management. We have that state level, I believe, as well. This is a question of whether we want to always marry the two. And so I, I, I hope that this, I, I also, I do not see the point in the amendment. I don't believe it takes away the spirit of the act and I don't believe it's sending the wrong message, or I think is also a concern from, uh, Council Flaherty, not to put words in his mouth, that we're telling the police officers that they are not welcome. I don't hear that. What I hear is that we want public safety to be in one lane and for, for the public resources to be, uh, attached to that only and that the marrying of the two, uh, public enforcement with the police and, and responding to emergencies might, is not something that we're comfortable with.
Thank you for that, Council Edwards. I'm going to let, uh, co-sponsor, Council Bach, jump in, um, and then we've got to go.
Yeah, Madam President, I'm so sorry.
Council Bach, if you could specifically speak to the concern that Council Flaherty is raising.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, my connection cut out for a bit, so I did not, I did not hear the, the exact language, but I will respond in general.
It is, if you need, it is the last be it further resolved that the council requests that the MBTA's commitment not to delegate command of the transit employee, vehicles, facilities and other resources or delegate decision-making about its service and operations to law enforcement. If I understand correctly, it's the last.
Well, that, that's the provision of his concern, but did he propose an amendment?
He proposed removing it altogether is what he proposed.
Got it.
And then heard from the lead sponsor and the other co-sponsor that they were happy with it at, you know, there's just been this back and forth.
Yeah. Yeah, and I got, I got the general gist. I'm sorry, I just, I, when Council Flaherty speak, I lost the connection for a bit.
Just, I'm going to let Council Bach get in. Go ahead, Council.
Yeah, I would just, I would just say that, um, I think, again, this is about, I don't think it's about the, I, the possibility that in an emergency situation that, you know, the T might like, you know, work with law enforcement around things. I think it's a question of like, who's making the decisions and who, how are we thinking about what this public resource like serves first and foremost? Um, and I think, like certainly what I felt like I saw on Sunday night that I was speaking about was a situation where thinking about the, the pub, the law enforcement aspect of the T sort of eclipsed, or like getting people home aspect of the T, um, and the, and the right that I think citizens have. Um, and so I think the concern about, about the T, um, uh, sort of, uh, subordinating its judgment vis a vis, it's like work as a transit agency to law enforcement, um, is a valid one and one, one that I would want to keep in the, in the resolution. Um, and I don't, I don't think that, um, it's going to constrain the MBTA in the way that, um, maybe my colleague is concerned. Um, I, I think it's just, it's a question of, it's a question of, uh, of asking that we keep a civilian judgment and a sensibility about what the transit agency is trying to achieve and control, uh, at all times because of what it owes to the public. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Bach. Um, a few more folks want to jump in and I want to give people the opportunity to weigh in, but we do need to move on. I'm going to call upon Council Baker and I see that Council Flaherty wants to jump back in. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Hello, thank you for the time. Uh, I, I don't know if I'm missing something here. We talk about peaceful assembly and the right to peaceful as- uh, uh, assemble. I do not disagree with that. The game I was watching on May 31st, the second part of the, of the assembly looked like a riot to me. Looked like people were, it was just total disarray. The police were getting, were getting beat up, quite frankly, outnumbered by protesters and advocates. And I think it's well within the T's right to close a couple of T stations, because if one person went down there and decided to destroy things, we would still be without a T here today. So I don't think we should be weighing in on what the T should be doing with their assets when it comes to changing, closing stations. People could still walk to other stations to get home if it, one person on the tracks would have closed the entire system the entire night. And I didn't think that that was a peaceful protest on, on May 31st. And furthermore, if people know, last week, the, the House brought up, the, the House was debating the, um, the Fiscal Control Board and they stripped the Boston seat. The House did that last week and we're sitting here talking about something that already happened. We should have a resolution forcing the, 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 the House of Representatives to put that language back in there. The Senate is taking it up, I believe, tomorrow. So our Boston delegation is fighting to try and keep that, that, our, our seat on that board. The T, 70% of the T works within the city of Boston limits. That's what we should be expending our energy on right now. And, um, thank you for your time, Madam, and that's about all I have. I do not wish to sign on to this and I do not support it.
Thank you.
Please have your friends not call my cell phone. Thank you. They can call the office all they want.
Thank you, Council Baker. Uh, the Chair recognizes Council Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam Chair, obviously for, for your indulgence and I'll just leave it this, is that I respect all of my colleagues' opinions and even to, to Council Baker's concerns that my sense is, I didn't necessarily agree with shutting down the train stations, but arguably what we saw, no doubt that it would have been millions of dollars in damage to our transit system. That said, uh, I just don't trust the MBTA Fiscal Management Control Board. I trust my colleagues, but I just don't trust them. And the fact that we don't have a seat at the table concerns me, uh, and whether it's the delegate language or not, um, again, I'm just, just want to remain cautious, given that, uh, I've been here through, through some really tough, difficult times at September 11th and the bombing and, and having access to, to vehicles to get people to hospitals and to safe havens is, is critical to our, to our first response. And so, uh, with that, again, not because of my colleagues, but more because I don't trust the MBTA's Fiscal Management Control Board, I've got reservations. And I appreciate you, Madam Chair, and the indulgence of being able to, to respond to my colleagues and I respect their opinions.
Thank you so much. So we're going to move on. We've heard all the discussion that we're going to hear on this docket. Our colleagues do seek suspension of the rules, so Council Wu, Mahia and Bach seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0759. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So this has been defeated and this docket will be assigned to the planning, development and transportation.
Can you vote?
Vote. Roll call, Madam Clerk, please.
Yes.
And quick, quick warning, Madam President, actually, um, the, if, if the nays are objecting to voting on it, then it will, it, you're right to assign it to committee, but if the nays are only objective, are only on.
It can't come before the floor. If the, you seek suspension of the rules and passage and they say no.
But, but I think the question is whether they're saying nay on it coming to the floor or nay on the actual vote, in which case it could still.
So my question was, you guys seek suspension of the rule. They said no, so that's what they're saying nay to, as I understand.
And you doubted the vote, so now it needs a new vote.
Roll call. So let's do the roll call. Madam Clerk, please.
Council, do I get number 0759? Counselor Royal?
Yes.
Counselor Royal, yes. Council Baker?
No.
Council Baker, no. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell?
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George?
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George? Yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Nope, unless resolved.
Counsel Flaherty, no. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey?
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia?
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu?
Yes.
Madam President, um, there are 11 in favor and two, um, in opposition.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. So docket 0759, because it was not unanimous, um, has not been adopted and will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development and Transportation.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to docket 0760. Madam Clerk, could you read that, please?
Thank you. Docket 0760. Counselors Braden and Mahia offer the following resolution, recognizing June 2020 as LGBTQIA Pride Month.
Wonderful. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This year I am celebrating pride with my partner, Mary. Uh, she's, we, we've been together for 23 years and I'm proud to be the first out lesbian elected to the Boston City Council. Um, I'm an immigrant from Northern Ireland and when I came to Boston in 1995, I'd never been to a pride parade before. Um, uh, and it was such an exuberant and joyful and affirming experience and it was truly life-changing, because I come from a place where, uh, gay marriage has just been approved mid-law in Northern Ireland by a, a parliamentary maneuver. Uh, they couldn't get it done in under ordinary order. So, uh, the discrimination that I, I experienced back home and not being able to be my, live out and proud and be myself, um, I carried that with me here and coming to Boston was truly life-changing. The demonstrators who protested on June 28th, 1969, 51 years ago, this month followed, following a law enforcement raid on the Stonewall in an LGBTQIA club in New York City, demonstrated bravery and resilience and were trailblazers in the, uh, LGBTQIA movement for equality and justice. That first, that first, uh, protest, uh, and ensuing riots, uh, was the birth of the gay, gay movement, the gay pride movement in, in the United States. As we celebrate the 50th anniversary of Boston Pride, let us rededicate ourselves to the unfinished work of liberty and justice for all, as we say in our Oath of Allegiance, particularly transgender and tra- and gender non-conforming people of color who are at heightened risk of violence, misgendering and police brutality. Thank you.
Much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. You have the floor. Counsel Mahia?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, and thank you Counsel Braden and her staff for their leadership as well. June is Pride Month and I want to talk about what the word pride means. Pride is much more than just a celebration of who we are. Pride is a commitment to making the voices of those often unheard to ensure that they are validated and valued. Let's not forget that the first Pride Mar- March was a protest, a protest led by trans people of color, people who were fed up about having to lie about who they are and what, and the people that they loved. People who are tired of having to hide themselves from their family and their employers. Pride is a movement to speak out against injustice and to push the needle towards justice and equity. The Pride Month, um, this Pride Month is honestly feels like we have more work to do than ever. It's going to take all of us if we want to move the direction of accountability to queer people in the city of Boston. I have been working with the LGBTQ community for over 25 years and I still have so much to learn. For example, I didn't know that two of our staffers who identify as LGBTQ couldn't donate blood during the COVID-19 because of their sexual orientation. We still have so much work to do and our office will be there every step of the way. Thank you again to Counsel Braden, thank you to all of the LG, LGBTQ plus city employees and thank you to every queer person breaking down barriers in their work or in their school or in their homes. We hear you, we see you, we're proud of you and we'll never stop fighting alongside you. And I just wanted to just take a quick little moment, I know we're on Zoom, but I wanted to just show that my 10-year-old made this, um, flag, if you will, for, um, my staffers here and participated with me in the Pride Parade, um, march last year and she learned about the pronouns, um, and now she is one of the biggest LGBTQ advocates in her class, pushing to ensure that we're talking about inclusivity. And this is what it's going to take, it's for all of us, working in different ways, educating our little ones to learn that when it comes to it, at the end of the day, love[1757.36] to learn that when it comes to it, at the end of the day, love is love. And we have a responsibility and an opportunity here in the city of Boston to uplift that love.
And I'm here for. Thank you, Counsel Mahia. The Chair recognizes Counsel O'Malley. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Asked that my that my name be added, just very briefly, wanted to commend the makers for this obviously wonderful resolution. I I think all of us would agree that the raising of the pride flag typically this week, or probably would have been last Friday, is is one of the most well-attended and well, well-received flag raisings of the of the myriad that we do every year. Some of you may know, others may not, that before I was in office, I worked as the political director at Mass Equality. And back in 2006, 2007, it was a real dogfight just to affirm marriage equality in this Commonwealth. I know Liz Braden knows, because she was out there alongside. We met, we met actually right before that, but we worked together at that. I know Michael Flaherty knows, because he was an early and loud and vocal supporter. I know many of our colleagues remember those days. And I wanted to just sort of draw the comparison that a decade and a half ago, being seen as too pro-LGBTQ wasn't necessarily politically helpful. And it was hard just to affirm the basic human rights of our gay, lesbian, and trans brothers and sisters. And we've seen, I think, not only a sea change on public opinion and obviously great legislation and true allyship, but we've also seen some great policies happen. So so it's important to affirm, obviously, our LGBTQ constituents, our neighbors, our friends, our family, and pass this resolution. But I just also hope it it gives us all hope as we find ourselves in this moment of trying to do more to truly build a better society that that, you know, working together, listening to one another, really sort of coming together for the common good can happen. It can be slow, it can take time. Lord knows it has all across the board. But I know working together, we can we can truly build a better Boston, build a better Commonwealth. So thank you to the makers. Please add my name.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As referenced, obviously, as the first in the council to support marriage equality, just want to send a shout out to our colleague. Happy Pride and congratulations, Liz, and to all of my friends and supporters out in the LGBTQ community. So best of luck for continued endeavors. And it was working together that we made it all possible. So celebrate with pride, Liz.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Please add my name. Madam President, I just wanted to make a quick point. When I, when I joined the military in 1987, gays gays and lesbians could not serve openly. I stayed in for the next 25 years, and I saw them not being able to serve openly. I was in during Don't Ask, Don't Tell. And I continued in when gays and lesbians were able to serve openly. So I saw the military culture change in a 25-year period. Obviously, we saw our society change as well for the better. So I just want to say thank you to all the advocates that helped educate so many people about this important civil rights issue. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counsel Flynn. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Counsel Braden for proposing this. I always count myself very lucky to have grown up. Yeah, I I grew up in Bay Village, a neighborhood that was largely LGBTQ at the time I was growing up there. And and also grew up in a church that was very early to throw its doors open, not only to parishioners, but to clergy, both men and women, you know, who love whomever they love. And I think, like, for me, it's been a great blessing to grow up in the in the period of of folks coming to understand how how obvious it is for us to for us to love and accept each other regardless of the side of who we love. But I think I want to just really chime on what Counselor Mahia said about remembering where pride came from. You know, I mean, this should have been, we should have, we should be all heading to the 50th Anniversary March in Boston this weekend, and we're not. But, you know, that original, that that original occasion is really a reminder to us of how, you know, like hatred kills. And the LGBTQ pride events, you know, they emerged in defiant response to state-sanctioned pain and death. And and I think we really have to think about how how we continue to push in this moment of talking about Black Lives Matter, how we how we push to make sure that we don't have state systems that that perpetuate violence and exclusion. And I think we're really lucky to have the example of the leadership of the LGBTQ community in pushing it back against all of that. But it should be as as sobering as it is joyful about how much how much hard work there is ahead for us. And I'm glad to see us this year in Boston flying the flag that kind of recognizes the intersectionality of these issues and and the number of, you know, in particular, black and brown queer folks who have long been at the intersection of those those two forms of violence and exclusion. So, you know, just really feeling it, feeling in my heart both the 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 joy of the celebration and also the sobering reality of how much work we have to do. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. We've got several more blue hands up. I'm going to ask my colleagues to be brief in their remarks. The Chair recognizes Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I I will be brief, of course. I want to thank Counsel Braden for bringing forth the resolution, sharing your story, and of course, being a trailblazer in your own right. Appreciate you, value you at the table, and it's been a joy to work with, in partnership and to work with you. Everything has been said, but one piece I do want to flag that has come up in many conversations I've had, as we talk about Black Lives Matter in this context right now, many of the conversations are exclusionary and do not speak about specifically black trans women in that struggle and and the the hate crimes against that population in that community. And it is essential that as we are pushing against hate and saying every human life matters, that those who, in their own hearts, particularly, and I'm going to speak to those in the black community, who hold stereotypes, bias, or hate towards the LGBTQ community, that we think hard about what that looks like as we are trying to push for human rights for our own residents and our own sort of blackness. And so I just wanted to raise that up. Of course, thank the Pride Committee for the work they've done over the decades to create this space for all of us. They've organized with us not only for a march and for the festivities, but also in policy, in housing, education, reform, and in every system. So I just wanted to raise that up and thank them as well. Thank you, Madam President. And please do add my name.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Asabi George.
Thank you, Madam President. And I too will be brief. And I just feel that in this time, that we as a city and as a state and as a country face and as a world, as a global, a global state of crisis, that I think the global state of crisis has also been, as asked, as asked, I can never say that word, has really been amplified with this, with the virus, the pandemic, and our disconnection from one another. I feel in this moment, thinking about the celebration of pride, thinking about the celebration of the LGBTQ plus community, how much we all truly need that moment and that celebration that we would have had should we not have been in the mix of this pandemic. So I just, you know, the desire to feel that love for one another, that desire to feel that that joy to be with one another during the pride celebrations that we're missing at this time is something, sitting here reflecting and looking at the the rainbow of balloons behind Michelle's backdrop, I feel so desperate for those moments of being together and so desperate for those moments of love, because it is something that, at this moment in time, escapes me. And 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 I look so forward to celebrating that in the future. So just want to share that, that in this moment of challenge, in this moment of crisis, that with love, all things are truly possible, and how desperate I am on a very personal level to find those connections once again. Thank you, Madam President. But please add my name, please add my name.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Wu with the arch of rainbow balloons. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And so much has been said. I heartily agree with all my colleagues. So just want to say thank you so much to the sponsors for making sure that, even though we are in a time when many of the events have been postponed or turned virtual, that the council is still getting on strong, on the record, and strong support and affirmation and gratitude for all the organizers. We, I agree that pride is dancing and fun and and the type of joy and love that can only come out of collective struggle and collective recognition of of how important we all are to each other, how connected we are. So thank you to the decades, generations of activists who made sure that Massachusetts played a role in the history of marriage equality in in this country and looking forward to our state and our city continuing to be at the forefront of that that fight. Thank you. Please add my name.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo. You have the floor.
Thank you. And and I was blessed to grow up in a family that recognized that love was love, regardless of the gender of the folks who loved each other. And so with that in mind and putting that in the context of now, I just want to, you know, note that LGBTQ Pride Month and and the first official pride parade stemmed from the Stonewall riots, which were essentially protests against targeting by the NYPD of gay bars and unjust laws that affected LGBT folks for for years and years and years. And here we are today in a position where I think this is likely going to pass with a majority vote on this council. And I think it's really important to understand that power concedes nothing without a demand. I love this month as a celebration of activists who put their bodies on the line, literally, to get where we are today. And so from the standpoint of of this, I'm I'm wholeheartedly a fan of Pride Month and recognizing it, because I see that as a way of recognizing the folks in LGBT community that really took risks back when this was really difficult and back when, you know, wanting to be themselves and wanting to love who they loved actually could have meant violence and death. And unfortunately, in some places, it does. But at least we've moved forward in a way where the government is better, not perfect, at recognizing them and and their ability to love who they love. And so thank you, Counsel Braden and Counsel Mahia, for your leadership and and bringing this forward. I'm not sure if I missed anybody else who got added on as an original sponsor, but add my name. And thank you so much to the activists who've been part of that struggle and who are part of the Black Lives Matter struggle now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I think Counsel Edwards, are you trying to get in here, Counsel Edwards? I can't quite, okay, yes. The Chair recognizes Counsel Edwards.
Thank you. First, please add my name. Second, it has been part of the, a true honor, honestly, to serve with you, Counsel Braden. It's very rare that you get to meet the the historical figures. And whether you want to admit it or not, you are one. And what you have done for so many generations, breaking a huge glass ceiling, I I just want you to reflect on that. I'm so proud to serve with you. I am so proud that you are my colleague on the Boston City Council. So and I just, I think it's very important for us to recognize. I mean, you're incredibly humble with your beautiful brogue, and you're so sweet and kind, but you are a historical figure. What you have done, you have made history. You ran as yourself, open and beautiful, and your love shines for you and your partner every time I see you both, and I give you huge hugs. So I wanted to first acknowledge that. I then also wanted just to end on this, and it's a quote. "I am proud that Richard and my name is on the court case that can help reinforce the love, the commitment, the fairness, and the family that so many people, black or white, young or old, gay or straight, seek in life. I support the freedom to marry for all. That's what loving and loving are all about." For those of you who may not know that quote, that is from Mildred Loving. June 12th is Loving Day in the United States. It's where we celebrate this decision in 1967, 13 years before I was born, for folks to marry and love who they want regardless of the skin color that they come in. And I had to recognize that deep connection. It was quoted in the historic decision from the Supreme Court. And again, as we look to the past for the parts and springs and places and times where our civil rights movement have have come forth, we must also look back on on at that moment, too. That was a historic breaking of of a massive mold and a huge shift towards justice. And we have to celebrate that, not only as Counsel Asabi George mentioned. We must celebrate generally, but this is a time of extreme pain. We are in need of healing and sometimes remembering those victories and those moments where we came together and continue to come together. We're reminded again that the arc of the moral universe is long, but it certainly bends towards justice. So to my historic figure and to my colleagues, thank you all for the work you've done. Counsel O'Malley, as you mentioned, what you were far ahead of your time. Counsel Flaherty, far, far ahead of your time. And and I just want to say thank you. It's an honor to serve with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Counsel Baker. You guys got me all choked up here. Let me just add to the chorus. I think Counsel Mahia said it best, love is love. Counsel Braden, we love you. Congratulations to 23 years for you and Mary. It 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 also makes me think of the intersection, and I think Counsel Bach said it. And I'm thinking of my mother's brother, my uncle, who was gay, never came out. You know, he's the son of a Baptist preacher. It was something we never talked about. All of us kids knew. We knew when his gentleman friend came over, and we knew, but no one ever talked about it. And I think about the pain that he was in. And, you know, as a black man in the 1970s and 80s and not being able to be who he was and how that led to addiction, and he died in the 1980s with a needle in his arm at a time where we don't have, we didn't have all that empathy that people have now for folks in recovery. And so I just think about the pain that he must have been in not being able to live his true life and be who he is and how far we have come since his death in the 1980s, really recognizing that love is love. Clearly, we have a lot more work to do. We are in another moment in time and a movement where we are fighting for our survival. And that is for everyone that has been marginalized and left to the side, whether the queer community, whether it's black community, Latinx, et cetera. We've got a lot more work to do, and I'm really proud to do that work with you guys. So with all of that being said, Counsel Braden and Counsel Mahia seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0760. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nay. Good, the ayes have it. Docket 0760 has been adopted. I will now move on to docket 0761. Madam Clerk, could you do us the honors, please?
Thank you. Docket 0761, Counsel Wu offers the following, requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding the Boston Police Department.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a 17F order that would seek a full list of the equipment, training tactics, and ways in which equipment and tactics have been deployed through our Boston Police over the last few years. The goal is that as we are having a national conversation about what makes communities safe, as we are talking about the idea of demilitarization and the studies that show that more heavily militarized law enforcement forces end up, are more likely to result in civilian fatalities, we're likely to escalate situations rather than de-escalate them, that we need to think about what it means to create a truly safe community for every single person in that community. So this would would provide a starting point in terms of just having some specifics on what does Boston Police possess right now? What sort of weapons of war or military vehicles? How did we come about those? Did we have to pay for it? Did it come from a federal program to understand what resources have gone to that? And then, again, what are we doing in terms of training and how that has all been deployed? So would seek suspension of the rules and passage of this 17F order today. Thank you.
Wonderful. Counsel Wu seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0761. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0761 has been passed. We'll move on to docket 0762. Madam Clerk, please.
Thank you. Docket 0762, Counselors Wu and Mahia offer the following order, requesting certain information under 17F regarding COVID-19 relief fund data request.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Wu.
Thank you, Madam President. Could I suspend the rule, make a motion to suspend the rules and add Counsel Arroyo as an original cosponsor?
Being and hearing no objections, Counsel Arroyo is added.
Thank you. So this is a follow-up from the hearing that the three of of us had held a while ago, just to dig into an equitable recovery from the pandemic and the ways in which Boston was putting resources at the city level to make that happen. One issue that came up multiple times at that hearing was wanting more information and and feeling some concern about how the city's existing relief funds, three at that time, four now, the Boston Resiliency Fund, the Rental Rental Assistance Fund, the Small Business Relief Fund, and the Boston Reopening Fund. What has already been allocated? What are the demographics of the recipients versus the applicants? What organizations have been involved in dispersments? And what are the processes? How could we think about language access and other ways that outreach has been conducted so that we can make sure to get it right from what is within our control at the city level for making sure there's an equitable allocation and response? there's an equitable allocation and response for every future round of dispersments? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Would you like to add brief remarks? Counselor Mejia?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Wu for your leadership in this space. Our office was proud to co-sponsor a hearing around the equitable recovery from COVID in our city. It was disappointing to not see anyone from the administration show up because that was our opportunity, an opportunity as public servants to find out what went right or what needs to be approved upon. We owe it to our constituents to hold ourselves accountable to them and to be transparent about how we are managing our recovery efforts. I look forward to getting this information and hope that this will be an important step in creating a more equitable recovery for our city. Getting this information is only the first part, though. We already know what we know, so what we need is next, is action. And so I look forward to continuing this advocacy with Counselor Wu and Arroyo. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Arroyo, would you like to add brief remarks?
Just very briefly, I'd like to thank the cosponsors, and I see this as a manifestation of part of our role as fiscal stewards and really fiscal oversight of the city to ensure that if there's lessons to be learned here, we learn them, and that as we do these kinds of things in the future, we maximize the ability to do them well and reach the targets that we're trying to reach. So thank you again to the original sponsors.
Counselor Flynn, did you want to jump in here with a very brief comment? I see your blue hand up. Counselor Flynn?
Thank you, Madam President. Please add my name. This will be an important conversation. I do want to acknowledge that I think the city of Boston, the BPDA, has done a good job on food access outreach during this pandemic. I know a lot of our colleagues communicated directly with BPDA, so I just want to acknowledge their work during this difficult time as well. It's something I'm proud of, and they tried their best to make sure people that needed food received food. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Flynn. Counselors Wu, Mejia, and Arroyo seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0762. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0762 has been passed. We'll now go on to docket 0763. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0763, Counselor Edwards offers the following order, requesting certain information under 17F regarding the BP, I'm sorry, the DPA equity and affirmability, I'm sorry, affirmatively furthering fair housing. I'm sorry.
That's okay. We got it.
Going blind, among other things.
That's okay. The Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Well, thank you. And to the clerk, I wanted to acknowledge it was actually our typo that probably tripped you up. It should be the BPDA. So, instead of the, so, thank you very much. This is a, I'm ultimately going to suspend, ask to suspend the rules and pass, but this is basically a moment in time for the BPDA to show the receipts, and that's what I'm asking for. They, this is a time where we need to plan differently, and we need to look at how they have been planning. And while they have noted that they have received funding to change their name, they have done different community outreach, they have done more translation, and I do believe that they have made attempts to be seen as operating differently. But when it comes to the crux and the very point of their job, which is to plan for the city and to have a vision for the city, I have not heard any real commitment from them to do so with an eye towards equity. I have heard that it's a culture within their office. I have heard that they are doing so with the guidelines of Imagine 2030. And so with that being said, and with the recent working session where I specifically asked who would be the people I can seek information from about their culture and about what they're doing, I'm submitting this 17F to make sure that we get the receipts for that culture, that we get the evidence of how they are planning differently, how they are considering the vulnerable populations, which not, not only include people of color but families, which is the number one discriminated entity, or people in housing are families. And so how does the BPDA look at these vulnerable populations? How do they affirmatively further fair housing, which is the federal law that they are to comply with? And I'm asking for all the evidence that they are complying with that law. And so with that, I'm going to ask that we suspend the rules and pass and allow for me to get that information.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. I see Counselor Campbell would like to jump in. Counselor Campbell, are you trying to speak?
Thank you, Madam President. Quickly, add my name, and thank you to Counselor Edwards for your leadership here. And most importantly, as we all continue to talk about police reform, not forgetting there are other systems, right, that communities of color need to be sort of dismantled and reimagined. Housing is one of them, so appreciate your leadership. And then, Madam President, separately, the other dockets previous, I wanted to add my name to those as well. So I don't know if I missed that as well.
People to stay present, because what I don't want to keep doing is adding people after the fact. So I mean-
I was present, but I didn't hear you ask for docket 0761 or 0762, if you wanted us to add our names.
If I may?
I was going back to that.
Madam Clerk?
Madam President, if I may, generally-
We're not adding names.
Yeah, generally, 17Fs, people don't sign on to that. It is the individual requesting information to perhaps form legislation or have hearings based on-
Thank you, and thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it.
Yes. I know-
I'm here.
Your support, and we're gonna issue-
I would add my name if I could. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Edwards. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss that.
Are you trying to get in, or are we ready to?
I was, if- I was trying to get in, Madam President, very briefly, but it's okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say, I won't ask to add my name. I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm, I'm, fair housing is something that I was actively working on at the Housing Authority before I came here. It's a real active interest of mine and the councils, and, you know, and I think I'm excited about the working session Counselor Edwards has called. And I really, I know this is a retroactive thing, but I know that certainly I would say, as a budget chair, although we don't directly oversee the BPDA budget, you know, we had them in, but we don't, like, one of the things I hope is that as we look sort of prospectively, that there's, that there's a real adding of investment on the BPDA side, both, both on a language access piece and on fair housing. Because I think, you know, my experience at the Housing Authority is that, you know, to do fair housing right, you need a fair housing officer. To do language access right, you need real staff capacity. And so I know that's, I know that this is a retroactive thing, but I think, you know, I've had good conversations recently with the BPDA about that, and I think I'm hopeful that, you know, we can push in that direction going forward. So, thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else looking to speak? No. Okay, wonderful. Counselor Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0763. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Docket 0763 has been passed. We'll now move on to docket 0764. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0764, Counselor Mejia offers the following order for hearing concerning university campus police in the city of Boston.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We need to start taking a look at all different kinds of police force in our city. We have over 152,000 college students living and working in our city every September through May. The BPD and campus police are both responsible for our college students. Recently, however, we've seen campus police take on a greater role in our city. Photos of, have surfaced of Harvard campus police working alongside the BPD at mass demonstrations, and we have been well documented that the UMass Boston's campus has been used as a staging ground for excessive militarized forces in our city. But let's be clear, these instances are not a one-off situation. They're the result of policies put in place that encourage cooperation between university police and the BPD. We need to have a conversation about how our city's university, which currently makes payments in lieu of property taxes, use their resources to participate in city, in our system of law enforcement. There's going to be an opportunity for us to listen and learn about what it takes and what's at stake in all of our colleges and universities, and how we as a city can better be engaged in the lives and the lives and realities of our college residents. I look forward to this conversation and hope to have participation from the council, advocates, university administration, and members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready to take folks who want to add their names? Show of physical hands. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counselor Campbell, Counselor Wu, Counselor Edwards, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Bach, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Sabi George? And would you like to add a few comments, Counselor Sabi George? You have the floor. And Counselor Braden, are you looking to speak as well, Counselor Braden?
No, just add my name.
We'll add her name, and Counselor Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and please add my name to this. I think it's a really important conversation to have. I will state, as the daughter of a security guard at Boston University, it is important to, and that's a slight difference in a school, a school police, as a security guard, certainly unarmed, work behind the booth, checking kids in and making sure that kids are coming in safely and going and responding to their needs regularly. I think that it's really important to note that this is not about disconnecting the two, that our school, campus police, university police departments, and our Boston Police Department need to work in partnership together. There are a lot of places, especially when we think about campus sexual assault and other incidents of violence that happen on our college campuses. There needs to be a collaborative and cooperative working relationship between the Boston Police Department and our campus police departments. This is a really important subject matter. It's a really important discussion for us to have, but I don't want to confuse the two, that there shouldn't be, for me, that there shouldn't be cooperation and working relationships between police departments. Thank you, Madam President. That's to the Maker. If there is an opportunity for clarification today or at a future hearing order, I'm, I'm all ears with it. I'd actually also share just a very personal story that I don't often share. My father died while at work, and it was a Boston University police officer that worked on him for many, many minutes to try to save his life until EMS was able to respond. My father eventually did die, never regained consciousness, but it was a Boston University police officer that worked on my dad for a really long time in an attempt to save his life. So they are, they need to be a partner in this work. They need to be a part of this work, and I do look forward to this hearing. Please add my name.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President. Please also add my name, and I appreciate the previous speaker's comments and sort of tying that together, just to make sure that it is about a partnership and particularly in active shooter situations. We need collaboration. We need information. Information's key to stopping the threat, but also for the instances that she also referenced. So I just want to comment and say to my colleague, Counselor Sabi George, you did a nice job in terms of just tying that together, and that's why I'm adding my name. So thank you.
In the chamber?
He is.
In the chamber. Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Flaherty. I'm going to go back to the lead sponsor. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues for their feedback. I just want to be really clear that this hearing order is not about ending our collaboration and our partnership, that it's really more about the role that campus police plays in being a staging ground for militarized force and use. And so that is really what the conversation is about. So I just want to be really clear and do appreciate those comments.
Thank you for the clarification. Counselor Flynn, did you want to make a remark or just add your name?
Just add my name. Thank you, Madam President.
Wonderful, wonderful. Yep. Counselor Flaherty, are you all set?
Just thank you, Madam President, because I appreciate the lead sponsors and why we had concerns, I think, was that last week, I think it was the Acting Chancellor, I think, threw the state police off of the campus. And so I'm glad that the Maker and even my colleague, Counselor Sabi George, just tied it in. It's not about removing sort of the local department, it's collaboration, it's partnership. That was key, but my concerns were driven because of what happened last week with the state police being asked.
Wonderful. I want to make sure we got all the sign-ons. People, show of hands, if they want to add their name. Madam Clerk, I think you've got Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Bach, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Wu, Counselor Edwards. It's confusing with Baker because his picture's got a hand up. I don't know. Counselor Campbell, please also add the Chair, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Braden, Counselor Sabi George. Thank you so much. Docket 0764 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety. I, now, the next docket is one that I am introducing with Counselor Mejia. So I'm going to ask Counselor O'Malley to come into my office, and I'll go into his. I'm kidding.
Okay.
I am turning the gavel over to you. I am turning the gavel over to Counselor O'Malley at this time. Thank you, Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0765 into the, or place it before the body.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Docket 0765, Counselors Mejia and Janey offer the following order for hearing, identifying restorative justice practices and the role of police in our schools.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now calls on the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and thank you to Counsel President Janey for co-sponsoring this important hearing. I would like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Campbell as an original cosponsor.
Seeing and hearing no objections. Counselor Campbell is so added.
Thank you. Thank you so much. When I was preparing to speak on this hearing order, I was in a really negative headspace. I kept thinking about all of the deficits of our school disciplinary system, how it disproportionately punishes black and brown children and has directly put students' lives in danger by generating school incident reports that have made their way into the hands of ICE. But here's the thing, we already know what we know, and the more we talk about our deficits, the less time we have to build a future based on our assets. So I want to spend some time talking about restorative justice. For those of you who don't know, restorative justice is a practice that empowers students to resolve conflicts on their own with the help of social workers and school psychologists. School districts across the country have began to adopt this as a method of addressing conflicts in their schools, and has resulted in a decrease in suspensions and an increase in student happiness. In times like this, we should be doing everything we can to support our students' mental health and safety, and I think this hearing was a good start. Let's get to work on having a student-led conversation and lead with what makes our community strong instead of focusing on what we lack. I look forward to this conversation and working alongside Counsel President Janey on this matter. And I will just say that as someone who worked in the education space, and one of the things that I kept hearing about school culture and climate is that we needed to ensure that we are creating safe spaces because our kids are carrying trauma in their backpacks. And then what we, what we do is provide punitive measures to deal with that. So this is an opportunity to look at the role of school police officers and the presence of their, in that environment, and how can we really lean on restorative justice practices as a way to deal with this. So thank you all, and I look forward to the conversation.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair now recognizes the Council President. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to partner with my sisters in service, Counselor Mejia, as well as Counselor Campbell. I, too, my background is in education. I was in education advocacy, working closely with parents, with students, with young people, with our educators, around a whole host of issues. School discipline is a big issue that came up, certainly as the way we were doing school discipline just a few years earlier was one that continued to feed the school-to-prison pipeline. Very proud of the work that Massachusetts Advocates for Children did. That is the organization that I worked for before becoming a counselor and leading the efforts at the state level in terms of getting Chapter 222 passed, which is our school discipline law in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that says that suspensions and school should be the last resort, that we need to be doing everything possible to make sure that our young people have access to the classroom and their teachers at all costs, and that the punitive measures that we were putting in place were harming, doing much more harm than good. I think there's still a lot of work that we have to do. I remember there being a lot of concerns when that law was passed about how we implemented and whether or not our educators felt like they had the tools necessary to do the work without having suspension as a go-to-
without having suspension as a go-to tool. I think we've come a long way in involving educators, involving our young people, involving parents in the conversation. I remember a fight, there was a model program, Diploma Plus, in Charlestown at high school. I'll never forget that budget season where we were investing and, you know, money really cuts. We get the level funding and we're supposed to feel good about level funding, and then his, that program was being cut. And it was, it was a program that had a lot of success in terms of restorative justice and those practices that we really need to get to the healing that we're talking about because the unaddressed trauma will continue to be triggered and we're going to continue in this cycle. So we've got to have a new approach where we can bring all parties together and get to a place of healing, and that's why I'm excited about this. I'm concerned about the presence of police in our schools. I know that there is a difference depending on which high school you go to. Some high schools have metal detectors, others don't. Like, there is a lot of inequity in our system that I think we need to tackle, and I think this hearing order allows us the opportunity to have really important conversations with all of the appropriate players and partners. We've spent a lot of this hearing, this meeting, as well as earlier hearings this week, talking about public safety, talking about the role of the Boston Police. In this meeting, talking about university police. We can't forget the school police and our school buildings with our young people and the role that they play, what role should they be playing, what role do we have young people playing in terms of restorative justice and how we really switch to a system that is focused on healing and restoring relationships and not one that is on punishing young people. The last thing that I will say about this is that the receipts, to use Counselor Edwards' term, the receipts are clear. The punitive measures are hurting Black and Brown kids. All of the issues that we're dealing with in terms of racial bias, whether implicit or explicit, is playing out in our schools. And it's not just playing out in our classrooms, it's playing out with all of the departments, including public safety in that department. And so we need to have a real conversation about what this new approach, this reimagining, this, how we really truly focus on restorative justice practices so that we can get to that healing. And I'm grateful for the partnership again of my sisters in service, Counselor Mejia and Counselor Campbell. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Mattapan. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley, and thank you to Counselors Mejia and Janey for the partnership and for your work in this space over the decades, right? Not just during the council, but as advocates, as residents, as women who get these issues deeply. I actually met Madam President in this work when I was at the EdLaw Project doing education cases, and you were at MAC, and we were at roundtables pushing for that school discipline reform, the new legislation, all of that. And so to sort of be in this space now, to continue this work and conversation is really, really exciting. You know, I'll just share one case. You know, I started my legal career as an education attorney, working for a nonprofit, and most of the cases were either special needs cases or school discipline cases. And I remember having, one of my first cases was a young man who, at the time, he was under the age of 10, and his grandmother had come into the office looking for an attorney. We provided free legal services. She was referred to us, and she couldn't, initially when she reached out to us, she couldn't locate where her grandson was. He had been in one of our schools. It was a BPS school. He had been arrested and taken out of the school in handcuffs, put in the back of a police car, driven somewhere for some incident that we found out occurred on the bus. They wouldn't tell grandma where he was. We had to find him. When we did, he was ultimately released to her custody, and then they came in to do an intake, and I was assigned to be their attorney. And I remember taking in my documents to do the intake, but I had to put all that documentation to the side because I could see the pain. Till this day, I still get goosebumps, the pain in that young man's face, and of course, the pain and trauma in the grandmother's face. I had to explain to that young man that what happened to him was not okay, and that should never happen to any young child in, not just Boston, but in this country. And sadly, across the country, we are seeing young people be taken out of classrooms, be taken out of their schools in handcuffs, sometimes as young as five or six years old, and it makes no sense. And recently was just talking about it in this larger context of police brutality and school officers and policing, that if that happened to a child who was not Black, for example, we would be mobilized, we would be outraged. And so when we're talking about this new context of what does it mean to reimagine how we police restorative justice, these practices, and there are so many detailed reports as to how they and why they're effective in helping sort of not just our students, but our teachers, everyone in a school environment, work on resolving an issue, but coming out of resolving that issue with an understanding of what went wrong and how to do better the next time, right? Without inflicting unnecessary trauma on our young people, these practices are critical. So this conversation is so timely. It connects, of course, to the cradle-to-prison pipeline, and as an education attorney was deeply involved in that work with the Children's Defense Fund. And the stats were staggering. You know, one in three Black boys in this country go to prison, one in six Latino boys, compared to one in 17 white boys, and it's on the uptick for Black and Brown girls. And so those numbers have not changed drastically. That too needs to be a part of the conversation when we talk about reforms, criminal justice reform, policing reform. And so I look forward to continuing that work in this space, really speaking to how you dismantle a cradle-to-prison pipeline so we can change those stats. But doing, this is one step to doing that right in our school environment. Some schools are already doing it through partnerships with nonprofits, and it's remarkable to see what does it mean to scale this work up and to do it in a more significant way. So Counselor Mejia, Counselor Janey, thank you for your leadership on these issues. Thank you for the partnership. Absolutely looking forward to this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. The Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from South Boston. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and please add my name. I think that, you know, some of the things we did with the Trust Act, and particularly the Enhanced Trust Act, spoke to a lot of these issues as well, so happy to sign on. I think we should be having conversations with respect to the role of school police and the role that our teachers, principals, school social workers play in school discipline. And I think we need real specific and clear guidelines and procedures for discipline, and also how punitive discipline should be administered. In fact, it should not be keeping kids out of school and not out of the school environment. Instead, we should be identifying ways to support students and put those very precious wraparound services around them. That said, there are instances, I served as an Assistant District Attorney in Suffolk County and spent some time as a juvenile point prosecutor. I know Counsel Flynn, as a probation officer, can speak to this as well, but there are situations where there are violent incidents at school, and kids do bring weapons to school. And so being able to distinguish between, you know, someone that is threatening the public safety and threatening the school environment is completely different than, you know, a couple of classmates hussling around indoor, getting into some mischief. So we obviously want to make sure that we've got clear guidelines around that, and welcome to add my experience as a former Assistant DA and my tenure in the council at the hearing, and please add my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Madam Clerk, please add the at-large counsel from South Boston as a co-sponsor. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Austin-Brighton. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. I think it's really vitally important to switch to restorative justice principles as a way to address disciplinary issues in schools. This approach gives voice to students who carry a lot of trauma in their backpack every day. And when I worked in a special ed setting with children with multiple disabilities, I had the honor of working with a school psychologist who taught me that all behavior is communication. So when you see a kid acting out or self-harming or harming someone else, she always tried to get to the bottom of the issue and figure out what was going on. And we have to find ways that are more humane and constructive, a more humane and constructive approach to school discipline. And these practices also give our young people important life skills, self-esteem and self-awareness, and then also to be able to have the skill to self-regulate in moments of stress and conflict. I really think that this is a really much more productive way to go in terms of school discipline, and please add my name to this order. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Madam Clerk, please add the District Counsel from Austin-Brighton as a co-sponsor. The Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the makers for this. Please add my name. I think that it's so important that we continue to talk about improving the methods of restorative justice that we use across our schools. And as a former teacher, 13 years in a high school classroom that had school police, I think we need to make sure that we're including school police in particular at the table during this discussion, that we, you know, as we move to providing additional supports in all of our schools, I think that we'll see the use of school police certainly go down. We know that most incidents in any one of our schools really requires a mental health response and probably could have been avoided altogether should we have been providing any one of our children with the services they need from kindergarten on. We're pushing kids, in particular Black and Brown boys, into some separate classrooms at really young ages. We are setting them up, and Counselor Campbell referred to this cradle, to the prison pipeline. We're setting that up through some real challenges and problems within our system. But I do want to articulate and share the important role that many of our school police officers play in our schools. We had had during my time teaching some significant incidents in, serious incidents that required the intervention of an unarmed school police officer, and their response saved lives. We had, at East Boston High in particular, and across our district, we know that the important role they play, and they play this role with very little training. So I would hope that through this hearing, we could also learn more about the training that our school police officers have access to or should have access to, because I think we're going to realize that there's some real deficits in the training that they're required to participate in preparing for their, preparing for their roles. But in the end, for me, it's increasing mental health professionals in all of our schools. It's making sure that when we have the need for any sort of police intervention, that it's led from a mental health perspective first and foremost. But I do want to appreciate and recognize the role that our school police officers do play in our schools in protecting our kids, protecting school staff, and really protecting the community around that school should there be a large-scale incident. School safety is critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sabi George. Madam Clerk, please add the at-large counsel from Dorchester as a co-sponsor. The Chair now recognizes the District Five Counselor. Counselor Royo, you have the floor.
Thank you. One, I want to commend the makers for this, and I just want to note that as a lifelong Bostonian who did attend Boston Public Schools, I can assure you that I recall even at that age being aware that I was walking through metal detectors and that me and my friends were being forced to walk through metal detectors or wear clear bags so that people could see what we had on us at all times. Or frankly, the fact that even at an exam school, I had more school police than I did guidance counselors or nurses. And so that was something that I certainly knew at the age of 13, 14, 15, 16, 17. And I think it's fair to say that if we spoke to our student body now, they're aware that the resources in their schools that go towards sort of policing them as opposed to treating either their emotional or social-emotional health or their actual physical health are disproportionate. And so I think this is something certainly worth looking at, and I just want to keep in mind that, you know, this isn't just a conversation about grown folks, if you will, discussing what's good for our kids, but our kids know, I certainly knew, what that looked like and what that felt like when I was going to school. And so with that in mind, add my name, and thank you so much to the original sponsors for really looking at how we do this.
Thank you, Counselor Royo. Madam Clerk, please add the District Counsel from Hyde Park as a co-sponsor. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from East Boston. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I wanted to just, again, commend the makers. I wanted to simply add questions that I, one, add my name because I have a lot of questions. Does every single school have a public safety officer or police officer presence? I'm curious about that. If they don't, then how do we know and why do we assign to certain schools? What's the standards that we use? Is there a point system? Is there an incident requirement? Also, not only am I curious about the training, but I am curious as to why public police officers versus public safety personnel isn't the goal. And I understand safety is necessary, but in that team of safety workers, you have a nurse, you should have a guidance counselor, you should have folks who are particularly studied and educated in the adolescent brain and its responses. And I'm just curious how much of all of that training goes into folks. I think that should be required for anyone who's going to work permanently in and around our youth. What is their training and understanding of adolescents and their emotional maturity, so on and so forth, and recognizing trauma in them as well? So there's some baseline agreements of training that I think we should all be holding them to as well. I went to school, there was no metal detector, there was no officer there, and I graduated in 1999, and that's when Columbine happened. So I want to also acknowledge there is a shift, whether people like to admit it or not, there is a shift about what and how safety used to be in schools and what schools are now. We've had many, many shootings in schools, elementary schools. And so the question for the makers and I think in our conversation will be, how do we assure safety, right, without police presence or with police presence, without stigmatizing students and making them feel that they are the ones to be watched, that there's something wrong with them, or that there's something about their natural nature, how they're expressing their anguish, their fear, or their concerns that warrants policing? So please add my name. I look forward to the conversation.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Madam Clerk, please add the District Counsel from East Boston. The Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Mejia.
Yes, thank you to my colleagues for all your amazing feedback. Really do appreciate the robust dialogue that this hearing order has created, and looking forward to diving deeper. We'll just make really another point of clarification. Again, this is really about looking at restorative practices and justice as a tool and as a way to deal with a lot of disciplinary infractions that we see. Having friends who are actually school police officers, I recognize and understand the importance of making sure that they have the tools and resources to function. I do want to dive a little bit deeper into how well-resourced and the training and all of that that Counselor Sabi George mentioned. And just to quickly answer Counselor Edwards' question, we have 75 police officers, school police officers on the force right now. We have 125 schools. But we'll dive a little bit deeper. Again, just want to be really clear that this is really about also uplifting the importance of restorative justice as a practice so that we're not continuing to feed the school-to-prison pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Would any, seeing no more blue hands raised for discussion, would any counselors like to add their name as a co-sponsor? Madam Clerk, please add the District Counsel from Beacon Hill. Counselor Bock, please add the at-large counsel from Rosdale. Counselor Wu, please add the District Counsel from South Boston. Counselor Flynn, I believe we've got you already, Counselor Edwards, I think, we'll make sure. And please add the Chair's name. Docket 0, excuse me, docket 0765 will be referred to the Committee on Education and School Matters. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor O'Malley. We will now move on to docket 0766. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Docket 0766, Counselors Mejia and Campbell offer the following order for hearing addressing non-lethal forced restraint tactics employed by law enforcement.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Campbell for your continued advocacy in the public safety space. We're calling this hearing order because we have a duty and a moral obligation to protect the lives of our constituents. During so many of my speeches, I normally say something along the lines of, I look forward to this conversation. But if I can be my true authentic self for a moment, I'm getting pretty tired of the conversation for the conversation about the conversation. We are exhausted with conversations. We don't need another hearing to tell us what Black and Brown people are being discriminated against. But we also, what we also need to be real with, understanding where our limitations lie as a city council. Our office looked into banning chokeholds outright, but our body doesn't have that kind of authority over the rules and the procedures of the BPD. But we're here, but here's where we do have the power. We have the voices of the people. We need an inside and outside strategy. Masks them. We need an inside and outside strategy, mass demonstrations in public forums if we want to impact change. I know it can seem exhausting, but we are on the verge of monumental change, and we can all feel it. We just need to keep on pushing. So I'm looking forward to having this hearing and moving the conversation into action. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my cosponsor, Counsel Mejia, on this critical issue. And I look forward, of course, to all of my colleagues participating, along with officers and all stakeholders. I think it is an opportune time to have the hearing, of course, given the dialogue we're having, not only in Boston but nationally. I've been saying, and I think we all have been saying, in the past week or so, that it's going to take a whole host of issues to transform the system. And this is one way that we can begin, given that we are talking about brutality, we are talking about tragic and traumatic and painful murders of folks. And so what does it mean to evaluate our own systems? I often tell Commissioner Gross that even if we say we're excellent, we can always do better. And I think that is a mantra I sort of work by or work with, and so I'm looking forward to this hearing. And again, thank you, Counsel Mejia, for the partnership. And thank you, Madam President. I want to be brief, given the time.
Thank you so much. Not seeing any blue hands, so we'll move right into who wants to sign on by a show of physical hands. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counsel Braden, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Asabi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Bach, Counsel Wu, Counsel Edwards, and please, oh, obviously, no, add the Chair. Docket 0766, refer to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. And now we'll move on to docket 0767.
Docket 0767, Counselors Flynn and Campbell offer the following order for hearing to discuss ways for the city to prevent and investigate incidents of hate crimes and discrimination.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I'd like to suspend Rule 12 and add Counsel Lydia Edwards as an original cosponsor.
Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Edwards has been added.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, we are filing this hearing order today to discuss the ways that our city can investigate and prevent incidents of hate crimes and discrimination. With the COVID-19 pandemic, we have seen an uptick of racial incidents and hate crimes against our AAPI community across the country. In recent weeks, we have had much-needed discussion on the institutional racism and discrimination that our Black residents and communities of color have experienced, have suffered. When someone experiences a racist or discriminatory incident, it can be difficult for them to find the avenue to report the incident or seek an investigation. And the victim of a hate crime or racist incident might also be too fearful to come forward and report to authorities such as public safety personnel. In the city, we have different departments that interact with constituents who experience discriminatory incidents. In particular, the Human Rights Commission, which was established in 1984 to guarantee all residents are given fair and equal treatment under the law, and also to investigate and report on complaints relating to discrimination. It was an effective program, and the Human Rights Commission brought people from various backgrounds together. It was inactive since 1996 until Mayor Walsh reactivated the commission in 2019. It's important for the city to have a way for residents to report hate crimes and discriminatory incidents and have measures in place for the city to formally investigate and review these incidents, as well as providing resources to victims and anti-discrimination education to the public and our schools. It is also critical that we continue to document incidents of hate crimes and make available racial, socioeconomic, and other relevant data related to these incidents so that we can better perform outreach and preventive measures. I hope that we can discuss all these things in this hearing and talk about how we can utilize agencies such as the Human Rights Commission to help us investigate and prevent hate crimes and incidents of discrimination. I want to say thank you to Counsel Campbell and Counsel Edwards for partnering with me on this hearing, but also I want to say thank you to all of my colleagues for being strong advocates for justice throughout our city. And I look forward to this discussion. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counsel Flynn. The Chair recognizes Counsel Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counsel Flynn, for the partnership, and of course, Counsel Edwards. And a special thank you to Counsel Edwards. You know, this is a continuation of the work, I think, with Counsel Zachem on the Human Rights Commission and some hearings we held last year. And we said we were going to continue that, and then, of course, COVID-19 happened. But looking forward to picking up the conversation and really working with the administration, Evandro Cavalo and others who are now responsible for the commission, on strengthening this incredible tool and apparatus that can provide residents not only with a vehicle to come forward with complaints with respect to almost every aspect of discrimination, it covers so many different demographics, has tremendous power. So looking forward on how we make this happen, how do we make sure people know about it, it's resourced, it has the human capital that it requires to do an excellent job. Obviously, the Commission Against Discrimination is one vehicle for residents. Sometimes that agency is under-resourced, people file complaints, they take a really long time. And we know that this is a big issue in communities of color, obviously, given what we're talking about now, that folks need attorneys, they need places to go to talk about the discrimination they feel almost every day, and sometimes they're just hit with barriers. So we have an opportunity to do something really remarkable in partnership with the administration at the local level. So really excited for this hearing and that continuation of the work. So thank you, counselors Flynn and Edwards. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Edwards.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to thank my cosponsors. This is very much a continuation of the work and conversation that stemmed from the 10th conversations we had about the Boston Fire Department. But what we realized is that the city of Boston needed a way to deal with systemic issues. As we learned when dealing with the Boston Fire Department and other departments as well, things just don't happen out of the ether, that there's been years of buildup, that there's been years of inaction kicking the can that allowed for these systems or allow for us to look a certain way in how we hire, and that we need to see it systemically and we need to approach it that way. I'm so happy that ultimately we ended up with getting the administration listening and getting the Human Rights Commission started, but it has been woefully, I think, underfunded. I don't think it's anywhere near the power, or is it really treated with the kind of respect that such a powerful, amazing reparative tool should be? Let me just talk about, it's not just about certain, the typical vulnerable populations that are subject to discrimination. Family status is covered under this. Your position in a union is covered under this. If you are in recovery, you are covered under this. Your source of income, if you are paid with either not paid at all, or if you are paid with, and you use food stamps and you use certain ways in which to get by, is covered under this. Parental status, not just being pregnant or not just having children or family, your being a parent or not being a parent is covered under this. This is the most expansive human rights legislation I believe in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we are not using it. We are not using it, we are not funding it, we haven't set up the website for people to go to it, we haven't set up the staff to receive it. And on top of that, there were suggestions made about the current legislation where it falls short. For example, it is not married with the state law that allows for 300 days to file a complaint. We're still at 120. Also, domestic workers, something near and dear to my heart, receives additional rights and discrimination protections in the state law. This law has not been updated to protect the domestic workers in the city of Boston, or at least to marry the protections they have at the state. So there is work to be done, and I truly believe if there's a commitment to creating an equitable world in Boston, we'll see it in the dollars and the resources provided to the Human Rights Commission. And if we don't see it, then we know the commitment isn't there. So I'm excited to be part of this conversation and get it done.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we will add names for those who want to sign on at this time by a show of physical hands. Thank you so much. Please add Counsel Braden, please add Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Wu, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Bach, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Arroyo, and the Chair. Did I get everyone? I think I got everyone. Docket 0767 will be assigned to the Committee on Civil Rights. And we are now moving on to personnel orders. Just warning folks, there are quite a few. So bear with us as we go through this. Madam Clerk, we'll move on, starting with docket 0768.
Docket 0768, Counsel Janie for Counsel Royal.
Counsel Royal seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0768. All those in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Docket 0768 has been passed.
Docket 0769, Counsel Janie for Counsel Royal.
Counsel Royal seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0769. All those in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Docket 0769 has been passed.
Docket 0770, Counsel Janie for Counsel O'Malley.
Counsel O'Malley seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0770. All those in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Docket 0770 has been passed.
Docket 0771, Counsel Janie for Counsel Wu.
Counsel Wu seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0771. All those in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Docket 0771 has been passed.
Docket 0772, Counsel Janie for Counsel O'Malley.
Counsel O'Malley seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0772. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed nay, the ayes have it. Docket 0772 has been passed.
Docket 0773, Counsel Janie for Counsel O'Malley.
Counsel O'Malley seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0773. All those in favor, say aye. Nay, the ayes have it. Docket 0773 has been passed.
Docket 0774, Counsel Janie for Counsel Mejia.
Counsel Mejia seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0774. All those in favor, say aye. Nay, the ayes have it. Docket 0774 has been passed.
Docket 0775, Counsel Janie for Counsel Mejia.
Counsel Mejia seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0775. All those in favor, say aye. 0775 has passed.
Docket 0776, Counsel Janie for Counsel Edwards.
Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 077. All those in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Docket 076 has been.
Docket 0777, Counsel Janie for Counsel Edwards.
Counsel Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0777. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed nay, the ayes have it. Docket 0777 has been passed.
Docket 0778, Counsel Janie for Counsel Royal.
Counsel Royal seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket. I'm going to remind my colleagues that you guys are off mute right now because we're doing these votes, so please keep the background noise to a minimum because it's all being picked up. Madam Clerk, could you please just start again with docket 0778?
Docket 0778, Counsel Janie for Counsel Royal.
Thank you. Counsel Royal seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0778. All those in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Docket 0778 has been passed.
Docket 0779, Counsel Janie for Counsel Royal.
Counsel Royal seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0779. Anybody say aye? The ayes have it. Docket 0779 has been passed.
Docket 0780, Counsel Janie for Counsel Wu.
Counsel Wu seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 080. All those in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Docket 0780 has been passed.
Docket 0781, Counsel Janie for Counsel Wu.
Counsel Wu seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0781. All those in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. 0781 has been passed.
Docket 0782, Counsel Janie for Counsel Braden.
Counsel Braden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0782. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed nay, the ayes have it. Docket 0782 has been passed.
Docket 0783, Counsel Janie for Counsel Braden.
Counsel Braden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0783. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed nay, the ayes have it. Docket 0783 has been passed.
Docket 0784, Counsel Janie for Counsel O'Malley.
Counsel O'Malley seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0784. All those in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Docket 0784 has been passed.
Docket 0785, Counsel Janie for Counsel O'Malley.
Counsel O'Malley seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0785. In favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Docket 0785 has been passed.
Docket 0786, Counsel Janie for Counsel Bach.
Counsel Bach seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0786. All those in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Docket 078 has been passed.
Docket 0787, Counsel Janie for Counsel Bach.
Counsel Bach seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0787. All those in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Docket 0787 has been passed. Now, we have a number of late files, folks, and most of them are for personnel orders, so you're with us here. One of them is a hearing order. And with, if there's no objection, we're going to add this to the agenda. And seeing and hearing no objections, these late-file matters have been added to the agenda. Okay, so the first one is a personnel order, I believe, by Counsel Asabi George.
Thank you. Counsel Janie for Counsel Asabi George.
Counsel Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. And this late file, a personnel order, has been passed.
Counsel Janie for Counsel Asabi George.
Okay. Counsel Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. The ayes have it, and this late-file personnel matter has been passed. These next five, I believe, are mine from the Chair. Madam Clerk, could you please, I believe they are?
I just have two.
Okay, whatever they are.
Thank you. They're all on the list. Counsel Janie for Counsel Janie.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed nay, the ayes have it, and this late-file matter has been passed.
Counsel Janie for Counsel Janie.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed nay, the ayes have it, and this late-file matter has been passed. Are those all the personnel?
Those are all the personnel, Madam President.
Wonderful. So we will now move on to this last late file, which is a hearing order. I believe it is from Counsel Braden and Mejia. I believe it is from Counselor Braden and Mejia. Is that correct?
It is. Would you like me to read first and last?
I would, please.
Thank you.
And just as our process for, there should be an email coming so that folks can see the whole thing from central staff. But our clerk is going to read the first whereas and the last be resolved, okay? So be on the lookout for an email. Thank you. So thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Offered by Councilors Braden and Mejia, an order for hearing regarding the epidemic of violence against transgender and gender non-conforming people. Whereas the month of June is recognized and celebrated as LGBTQIA Pride Month, observed annually, the Stonewall's uprising, Stonewall uprising of 1969, led by Black transgender women such as Marsha P. Johnson, 1945 to 1992, whose activism sparked a new phase of the LGBTQIA movement. And whereas on November 2018, ballot question, 75% of voters in the city of Boston voted to uphold the state law providing protection for transgender people from discrimination on the basis of gender identity in places of public accommodation. Therefore, now therefore being ordered, that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council holds a hearing to discuss the ongoing crisis of violence against transgender and gender non-conforming people. Relevant administration officials, community advocates, community health providers, and interested members of the public shall be invited to attend remotely in the interest of public health amid the COVID-19 pandemic filed in the City Council on June 10, 2020.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to thank my colleagues for their kind words today. I'm really truly honored to serve with you all as a city counselor. I also want to thank Counselor Campbell for lifting up the issue of violence against Black trans women in her earlier comments. As we recognize Gay Pride Month, or LGBTQIA Pride Month, which was instigated following the Stonewall uprising in 1969, which was led by a Black transgender woman, Marsha P. Johnson, we must stand up and recognize the transgender and gender non-conforming siblings in our community who are at heightened risk of violence. An International Transgender Day of Remembrance was observed annually since 1999, and was initially started to memorialize Rita Hester, a Black transgender woman who was murdered in our district here in Alston-Brighton District 9. Since 2019, the American Medical Association has classified the murders of transgender people as an epidemic. Thus far in 2020 alone, 12 transgender, gender or gender non-conforming people in the United States have been killed, including Tony McDid, an unarmed Black transgender man shot and killed by police, and was misgendered in initial police and media reports. Transgender and gender non-conforming individuals are often subject of hate and bias incidents, and their gender identity may put them at risk in other ways, such as being forced into unemployment, poverty, homelessness, and/or sexual, survival sex work. Fatal violence against transgender and gender non-conforming individuals disproportionately impacts transgender women of color, particularly Black transgender women. And as a white cisgender, lesbian counselor, I look forward to this conversation while uplifting the voices of community members, advocates, and trans and gender non-conforming members of our community to discuss how our city can best respond to the epidemic and ensure the safety and dignity of all of our LGBTQIA community members. We must also loudly and clearly tell that, state that the Black transgender lives matter, and thank you for your consideration of this order.
Thank you so much, Counselor Braden. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Braden for pushing this issue and having me as a co-sponsor. Before I dive into my official remarks, I just want to say that oftentimes we ask people to be allies and to join us in the work. And so for me, this is not just about being an ally, this is about being a co-conspirator and standing firm with you, alongside you on this fight. So beyond the allyship model, I am here for all of it. So thank you, Liz, as a fellow immigrant, power to that movement. But anyways, like I said, like I mentioned in my speech on our resolution recognizing June as Pride Month, pride is not just about celebration, it's about doing the work to make sure people can feel heard and feel safe. In 2002, the city of Boston passed an ordinance banning discrimination on the bias of gender identity. But that doesn't mean that our work is over. Our office has heard from transgender and gender non-conforming individuals who have felt discriminated against because of how they identify, not just by strangers or on our streets, but by the system as well. I sincerely hope that this hearing will be an opportunity to elevate those stories and that we can have a solution-oriented approach to tackle this epidemic. I also hope to see this as a learning opportunity for myself and everyone on the council. Thank you again to Counselor Braden and her staff for their work on this issue, and I look forward again to being more than just an ally, but being a co-conspirator and making sure that we address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Mejia. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. And thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Braden and Counselor Mejia for sponsoring this important hearing order and for your work on this issue for years. I also want to thank my colleague, Counselor Campbell, for her work on domestic violence issues. We partnered on a hearing last year on domestic violence, working with the Northeastern University Law School. I learned a lot from the discussions with domestic violence advocates and providers and survivors. And as Counselor Mejia mentioned, this is a learning opportunity for her, but it's also a learning opportunity for me as well. So I'm glad, I'm glad this is being called for, and I'm looking forward to learning more about ways that we can, that we can help the transgendered community that are involved, that are assaulted or a victim of violence, and what services and assistance could be provided to them. Again, I want to say thank you to Counselor Braden and Counselor Mejia as well. And please, please add my name. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Flynn. Would others like to sign on by a show of physical hands? Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Bach, Counselor Wu, Counselor O'Malley. You already have Counselor Flynn. Please also add the Chair. I think we've gotten, we got everyone there? Great. This late file matter will be assigned to the Committee of Civil Rights. And now we'll move on to green sheets. I don't believe anybody's looking to remove an item. Great, wonderful, here we go. We'll move right on to announcements then. By a show of blue hands for colleagues who would like to make announcements. No announcements. Look at that. Wow. Well, I do want to say happy pride. I know we spent a lot of time talking about pride today with the hearing orders and the resolutions, and I'm just reminded of marching last year and how joyous that was for me and Rosie, and Rosie connecting with Blaze and building a new friendship there, and it was wonderful. And so I want to celebrate and let my brothers and sisters in the movement know that we do stand with them. I'd like to call on my colleague. I see Counselor Mejia has a blue hand raised. You have the floor, Counselor Mejia. I think you're on mute. We can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now? Sorry about that. Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to make a brief statement to follow up on last week's resolution supporting Congresswoman Presley's resolution on police brutality. We tried to encompass the scope of what was at stake and the urgency that we all need in addressing the issues of police brutality and racial profiling. In our resolution, we included the names of over a dozen people who had been murdered by the police. When we posted that resolution online, somebody pointed out that we left out the names of people in Boston who had experienced the same fate. So I want to take this opportunity now to speak their names into the record and say that their stories live with us and impact everything that we do. The two people in particular that come to mind are Terrence Coleman and Burrell Ramsey. While these are the first two that come to mind, we certainly know they're not the only ones. We just want to be clear that when we talk about accountability, it's not just some far-off concept, but that it applies to everyone, including us. Part of this journey is looking at ourselves as individuals and as an institution, and looking for ways to make ourselves better. Our office cannot promise that we will be perfect, but we're going to work as hard as possible to hold ourselves accountable to our motto that all means all. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Asabi George.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sorry I didn't raise my hand sooner. I do want to just note in this, to the time of transition and everyone more or less working from home and a few of us trying to ease back into some routine, that central staff here at the City Council has really done a tremendous job sort of keeping the ship going and keeping the ship afloat during this very difficult time. So just gentle shout-outs and thanks to all of them. But today is Ashley Vassell's birthday, and so I just want to wish Ashley a very happy birthday on behalf of the City Council. Happy birthday, Ashley.
Thank you for that, Counselor Asabi George. Happy birthday, Ashley. And speaking of birthdays, it is also my grandson's birthday. My grandson, he's my youngest grandson. You've heard me talk about him. You've seen him in the chamber. His name is Chief Rogers, and he becomes a teenager today. And so I'm really excited that he has completed another revolution around the sun, and I'm really proud of the young man that he is becoming. And I'm just reminded, and I've shared this before, as a Black woman, as, you know, an elected official, as, you know, as a Black woman, I am deeply concerned for Black men in our city and our country, and certainly our children. And I know that little Black and Brown boys and girls are not immune to violence, not only in our communities, but violence that may be targeted toward them from law enforcement. And, you know, I think about Tamir Rice, I think about Ayanna Jones, I think about the children who did not make it to 13. And so I'm grateful to see my grandson grow and thrive, and I'm just reminded, you know, how important this work is. You know, my advocacy began as a young, single mom, as a teenage mom, for my own daughter. And I've been able to take that advocacy and broaden that out for children everywhere. But as we talk about public safety and law enforcement here, whether school police, whether university police, whether our own Boston police, and how Black and Brown people feel in our city, whether or not they feel safe and protected, and particularly our children, I'm just mindful of all of that and what is at stake as we make very important decisions over the next couple of weeks in terms of legislation and in terms of our budget. And so I want to lift up my grandson Chief, as well as Ashley, to say happy birthday. And I also want to just lift up little Black and Brown boys and girls all over our city who may be having birthdays this summer, who cannot celebrate the way that they want to celebrate, but I want to lift them up. That is why I do this work. That is why I think we are all doing this work. We are trying to create that better future, and that better right now for folks in our city. And so I'm grateful again to be able to do this work with all of you, and we will keep moving so that Chief and all of his classmates have a better world. So, happy birthday, Chief. Meema loves you. Anyway, we will now close out our meeting, like we always do, with memorials. And so today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, Joseph Corcoran. For Counselor Bach, Rosalie Phillips. For Counselor Braden, Michael Haynes, and Liz Stan Blake. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again a week from today, which is Wednesday, June 17, at 12:00 noon. This meeting, I think it will be virtual. We are trying to get back into the chamber, but this meeting will continue to be virtual for the safety of the public and all of us. Viewers can watch our council by going to YouTube and visiting boston.gov/city-council-tv. Again, that's boston.gov/city-council-tv. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay? The ayes have it, and this council meeting is adjourned. Whoever's in the building, if you want to huddle across the street, I'm here and available first round on me.